This conference will now be recorded.
You guys ready? We gotta get, we gotta, it's a long meeting, you guys. All right. Clerk, can you please start the recording? Today is Wednesday, September 27, 2023, and I'd like to call today's City Council meeting to order. If we could all please stand to say pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
I, I think so. Are they on there?
Councilmember Royal? Councilmember Casper?
Here.
Councilmember Leah?
Present.
Councilmember Servany?
Absent, excused.
Mayor Shrobin?
Here.
Thank you, clerk. Can we please have public comments from the audience?
Terry Glover?
My address is 1408 West 16th Avenue in La Center, 98629. Okay. I would like to ask tonight that you guys take into consideration when you're doing the ordinance for the dogs that you remember that there's not a black and a white. There's a gray crayon in the box, too. And Mercy is colored gray. So when you're going through the ordinances and changing them, I'd ask your heart to, to touch on it, too. I have four dogs in my home. We have two families. Because the other part of my family, we need to make it. And she needs us to make it. Her dogs are old and sick. And my dogs are support animals because I have a mental illness and I need them. And I know you're only supposed to have three dogs, but like I said, there's a black and a white. And then there's Mercy that's a gray. And I know I'm not the only one in this city that needs this kind of heart. I know I'm not the only one. We have a beautiful three-bedroom home. We all fit in it wonderfully. They're well taken care of. They're loved. We've had them since they were weeks old. There's no way we could make a choice. And we did not know, and ignorance is not an excuse. It's not a reason to say, oh, I didn't know, so we didn't check. We didn't know you could only have three. Our neighbor turned us in as a retaliatory response because we turned her in because they weren't taking care of their dogs. And please forgive my tears. They're not to change her mind. They're because I'm an emotional idiot, but she turned us in because we turned her in for not taking care of her pets. And she was angry with us. And that's why she turned us in. She texted me and said, you better decide which dog you're gonna get rid of because I'm turning you in for having four dogs. And I've been sick to my stomach and I had a heartache ever since. I hate living that way. I don't want her to be sad either, but please consider that and all the other people in the city that have similar stories, similar reasons. I have letters that prove from my doctors. I'll do anything that you need from me if you'll just think about it when, when you go through these and make the new ordinances. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Ryan Davis?
This might actually go quick. Don't do that. That's bad for your heart. Uh, do you, do you need me to state my name and address?
Please.
Okay, cool. Uh, Ryan Davis, 33920 Northwest Pacific Highway, uh, La Center, Washington, beautiful town. Uh, ladies and gentlemen of the La Center City Council, I come before you today to advocate for the implementation of a golf cart ordinance within our city, one that encompasses both gas and electric golf carts. The proposal carries with it a multitude of benefits that can positively impact our community in a variety of ways. First and foremost, allowing both gas and electric golf carts on designated streets can significantly reduce our carbon footprint while also offering flexibility to residents. We strive to reduce air pollution, promoting eco-friendly transportation alternatives is uh, promoting eco-friendly transportation alternatives is crucial. Electric golf carts produce next to zero emissions, contributing to a cleaner, healthier air for all the residents, uh, while gas-powered carts offer options for those who prefer them. Furthermore, a golf cart ordinance can enhance our city's mobility options. Gas and electric carts offer convenient and cost-effective modes of transportation, particularly for short trips within our neighborhoods by providing an accessible means to get around. We can reduce the reliance on traditional cars, alleviating traffic congestion and minimizing wear and tear on our roads. Another compelling benefit to the potential economic, another compelling benefit is the potential economic boost for our local businesses. Golf carts, whether gas or electric, can make it easier for residents and visitors to visit our shops, restaurants, and attractions within our city. Increased foot traffic can lead to higher sales, help small businesses thrive, and create a more vibrant local economy. Safety remains a top priority. I want to ensure the council that the proper regulations and safety measures will be put in place. Gas and electric golf carts would be limited to low-speed zones and equipped with safety features such as seat belts, lights, and horns. Educational campaigns can also be implemented to ensure responsible use as well. Additionally, golf cart ordinance that accommodates both gas and electric can foster a stronger sense of community. Just imagine families and friends leisurely traveling through our neighborhood, engaged in social interaction, and enjoying the scenic beauty of our city. Golf carts, regardless of their power source, can be a catalyst for community building, bringing residents closer together. Last but not least, promoting golf cart usage, whether gas or electric, aligns with the global trend towards sustainable urban planning. Many cities worldwide have had success integrating golf carts into their transportation network, offering choices to their residents. By embracing the modern approach, we demonstrate our commute, our commitment to a greener, more accessible future. In conclusion, a golf cart ordinance that includes both gas and electric represents a forward-thinking and inclusive approach to the urban planning. It addresses environmental concerns, enhances mobility options, boosts local businesses, promotes safety, fosters community, and aligns with global sustainable trends. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
There's no more comment cards from the audience.
All right.
Do we know if that's been proposed in the past?
There's actually discussion about it already.
There is?
Yeah. Any public comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak. State your name and address. Do we have callers on? We do. I'll say it again. Uh, any public comments? Any public comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak. Please state your name and address clearly. Are there any public comments to be read? There's none.
Hello?
Oh, okay.
And also someone's trying to talk. Kimberly, are you online? If so, we cannot hear you if you're trying to talk. Okay, we'll move on.
Okay, thank you. All right. Seeing as there's, how there is no public comments to be read, we will move to the consent agenda. If there are no requests for items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, council. So we have a very busy night from what the agenda shows, doesn't it? Chris Olson will be, will be unable to attend tonight's presentation. He asked that he can either move that off to the next time. Is that okay? Thank you. Next up, Proclamations Disability Awareness Month. Whereas the year 2023 marks the 33rd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and together with the Individuals and Disabilities Education Act, establish the right of adults and children with disabilities to participate fully in all aspects of American society. And whereas the City of La Center supports the goals of equity, opportunity, independent living, and economic self-sufficiency for people with disabilities. And whereas the U.S. Department of Labor chose this year's theme for the 78th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month as disability part of the equity equation, and whereas the theme reflects the importance of recognizing the diversity within our community to create truly inclusive workplaces. Whereas the principles of the Americans with Disabilities Act and Individuals with Disabilities Education Act urges citizens to rededicate their community to fulfilling the letter and spirit of the laws and ask policymakers and business leaders to redouble their efforts to benefit from increasing opportunities for meaningful employment of people with disabilities, promote employment in all sectors of our economy, and expand employment opportunities for youth with disabilities, and renew our commitment to inclusive workplaces. Now, therefore, I, Thomas Strobin, mayor of La Center, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Disability Employment Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to join in this observance. And Patricia, I, I'm not gonna try to butcher your last name, but I have a ten, Boucher?
Bisher.
Bisher is in attendance tonight and would like to say a few words, please, if you would.
Thank you. My name is Patricia Bisher. That's how my mother-in-law pronounces it, so that's how I pronounce it. I am the program manager for the Clark County Developmental Disabilities Program and staff to the Clark County Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. The role of the advisory board is to advise and make recommendations to the Clark County Council relating to developmental disabilities, issues, and services. The board provides community leadership on improvement of efficiency and effectiveness of community developmental disabilities programs. Each year, the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board hosts the Disability Employment Awareness Month in October, coinciding with National Disability Employment Awareness Month. This year, the event will be held on October 11, 2023, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. And I would encourage you all, you all should have received an invitation, and it's a free, public, open event. The awards honor the role with, of people with developmental disabilities that they have in assisting us to achieve a dynamic, productive workforce and recognize the leadership of the business community. The live in-person event will be held at Clark College in Geiser Hall at 1933 Fort Vancouver Way, Vancouver, Washington. The event will be livestreamed and recorded and aired on CVTV for those who prefer to watch from home. This is a free public event, though we're asking for registration so we know how many people to expect in person. And for registration information, please email me at dd-program@clark.wa.gov, or you can call 564-397-2130. Thanks so much for having us, and do I get a copy of that?
I have it here for you, Patricia. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks. Nice meeting you, dear.
All right. We have another proclamation tonight. Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2023. Whereas October is nationally recognized as Brands Breast Cancer Awareness Month, 31 days to raise awareness using pink ribbon imagery to educate about breast health, services, and program available to recognize survivors, those living with metastatic breast cancer, their supporters and loved ones, and to honor those lives lost to this disease. And whereas in the Pacific Northwest, one in seven women are affected by breast cancer, while the national average is one in eight women. Breast cancer also affects 1% of men. Only 15% of diagnoses is related to family history. 20 to 30% of those diagnosed with early disease will experience a recurrence. Breast cancer is a leading cause of death for women in the United States. And whereas genetics, environment, recurrence, and lifestyle result in more aggressive forms and late-stage diagnosis of breast cancer, and whereas Pink Lemonade Project, a Washington-based nonprofit organization, is on a mission to educate, empower, and support those affected by breast cancer with vital programs and services, and aims to address disparities among underserved communities by income, geographic, insurance, race, ethnicity, age, and gender who are disproportionately affected by this disease. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite the community and spread important messages of early detection, screening, and prevention, and assistance to women and men during and after treatment to increase health equity, reduce the number of new diagnoses, to increase survivorship, and to improve everyone's quality of life. Now, therefore, I, Thomas Strobin, mayor of La Center, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to join in this observance. Thank you. And we do have a speaker present, Mr. Don Stos, former chairman of the board with Pink Lemonade. Would like to say a few words.
Thank you, mayor, esteemed council, city staff, and interested citizens. Good evening. My name's Don Stos. And the, the proclamation says it all. The month of October every year is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Breast cancer is not going away. It does not discriminate. As a matter of fact, it seems to be affecting women and men of all ages. And so, Pink Lemonade Project works really hard to support those that have been diagnosed with breast cancer. And thanks to you and the proclamation they've given us this evening, and the backing of every city in southwest Washington helps us attain, obtain grants with those grant givers that know that all cities are, are backing us in this project. Uh, and one of our fundraising opportunities, of course, is our pink recycle bins. If you don't have a pink recycle bin, visit pinklemonadeproject.org, and for $100, you'll own the bin. Waste Connections underwrites the entire program, so every dollar raised through those pink lemonade bins go towards helping those that have been affected by breast cancer. So thank you so much for your proclamation and have a great evening.
Those pink cans actually stand out in your neighborhood, and they look good, so. Thank you. All right. Next up, Adura Presentation. This is for Adura Funding Discussion. Bill White is joining us virtually and will be presenting. Bill?
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to introduce you to my firm and discuss a little bit about what we've talked about with some of your staff in the mayor in regards to supporting you with some funding endeavors. Um, I'm just gonna give a real quick presentation. I know, you know, you guys have a lot going on tonight, so I'm gonna roll through and then open it up to questions. So if I can go to the first slide, can I control that, or does somebody, oh, there you go. So just high view, Adura is a multi-discipline civil engineering firm. We've got 70 offices in, in 20 states with strong presidents, presence in the Northwest, particularly in Washington. We've got a couple offices in Washington. I'm out of the Spokane office. And just kind of boiling it down, we, we do everything that has to do with civil engineering, permitting, infrastructure development, so on and so forth. What, what I like to think sets us apart in one regard from others is that we have a dedicated funding team that helps agencies get, get secure grant capital, loan capital for infrastructure projects within their communities. You know, a lot of other firms just kind of have engineering staff that do that. We have dedicated individuals that that's their specialty, and that's what they do. You know, our funding team works with, we work with cities, towns, counties, airports, port districts, private enterprise. We help with, with finding grants, loans. We do the rate studies. We can do impact fees, you know, kind of the full funding package. You know, we help people go after grants that are for the planning and design of pretty much all municipal projects, water, wastewater, environmental, aviation, transportation, and facilities. And then we do have experience with state and federal grants. And then below that just shows a list of agencies that we're, we're pretty typically submitting some of the grants to on behalf of our, our municipal clients. If you give me the next slide, please. So just an introduction, introduction to some of the friendly faces. The first two of them on the left are, are Spokane-based funding team. Anna is the Northwest Group Leader. She's, she's got about just sort of 10 years of grant writing experience. $100 million plus procured for her clients. And most of her experience is in Washington State. Anna is a very strong sidekick of hers, helping her write grants. And, and within her first four months here, she's helped secure about $3 million for our clients. Kylie Jones is a sustainable transportation expert that's done a lot of, of writing grants for federal funding type agencies. She's done tribal work and then done work under that, kind of the new environmental justice, the climate resiliency, multimodal environmental justice wing. That's a new big emphasis that's coming out of federal and state agencies trying to, trying to find funds for those that are a little bit more sensitive within our communities. And then my ugly mug over to the right, I've, I've been doing stuff for 30 years, and I wrote a lot of transportation grants and had, had a lot of great success with my clients throughout Washington State. Down below, there's a cast of players that, that support these, so trying to show you that just within the Northwest alone, we have a pretty robust team that, that help, uh, help our clients get grant monies to help with the infrastructure. I think I've got one more slide there. Just kind of a real quick overview of, of what we consider the funding process, you know? If, if we're to work with you, we really want to sit down first and kind of identify what your needs are and, and work with you to create projects. You know, your staff have a pretty good pulse on, on what those needs are, but then we can sit down and identify a project that makes the most sense to, to fit the infrastructure need. Then we help you create a funding plan. Again, it's just not about writing grants. It's about finding out how you can match the, the, the grant need or find loads to match the grants, or just how, how you can have a complete funding process for you and your community. And that all happens before we even get to submitting a grant. Few hints that we've noticed for success, and I know that a couple of you saw us present at AWC. This is kind of just a, a real short summary of, of what we've found for success, whether you use this or not. Real high recommendation that you lobby for support in advance with your legislators and those that make the decisions, including the grant agency. I mean, there are times where I just sit down with the grant agency and, and I will sit down and, for instance, if it was La Center, say, we have three transportation projects, TIB. You know, which one of them makes the most sense from the perspective of, of the scoring that, that you're using at this time? And then as a function of that, we need to know the nomenclature. It seems like the buzzwords within the industry is always evolving, always changing. And so knowing how to write those grants with the appropriate nomenclature and the information to support it is important. I always, as an engineer, feel like you have to have a really strong design concept and construction estimate, something that you just don't wag. You have to have some evidence-backed information in there, even with the application. Make sure that you know your narrative. How you tell the story is important. How you support the story is important. And then review, revise, review, revise. I mean, make sure that, that you're not having any technical errors in your application, things that make sense and that are clear and concise and that you don't have mistakes. And then finally, we feel like the last key is get the grain in early, because I tell you what, it seems like one out of four or five of these things, there's a mishap with uploading it onto a website, or, you know, something didn't work appropriately, so getting it in a day or two early is, is kind of our last tip. And so, you know, just really honored to be in front of your community tonight and hoping there's an opportunity to work with you. And if with that, I'll, I'll just kind of open it up to questions about our firm or our process.
So just a little background for council here. This is for grant writing. As you know, the last two meetings, we've actually awarded contracts to two, two different companies for state and federal lobbying. This is the last in that ties it in, or ties it together, right? Professionals that do this for a living, and that's the presentation Bill has given us tonight. Bill, I, I just went through my emails. I didn't happen to see a contract in there that we can send over to Bronson. So we probably will have to bring this back to council. I do apologize. If you can get that sent over, Bill, we'll get that to the attorney to look it over, and we'll bring it back. But if you guys have any questions, this would be the time to ask.
Um, can you, I mean, get a little bit more of an explanation on how you can integrate those two different entities that we've already hired? Is that, that's what you're saying, that they're bringing this together so that they all work in conjunction?
Yeah, yeah. So when we find grants that we want to go after federally or statewide, the lobbyist will work on our behalf or the city's behalf to help secure those grants. And this group here will be writing the grants, right?
If I could throw out a quick example, I, I'm just, you know, we, we work very closely with Airway Heights over here in eastern Washington, and, and they hired a lobbyist and, and then they put us on their grant team and, and, you know, we've been able to three or four grants get about $10 million in the last 18 months, and that, that's kind of a one-two punch with a carefully thought-out grant and funding program that's closely mirrored with somebody over there being a squeaky wheel in the legislature to let them know that, that there's a huge need over here and, and please pay attention to our area. And I, I really think that that's been the keys to success in that whole thing.
How do you prioritize your clients?
Well, it, it really is more dependent upon what the timeline for these grant applications are, so. Again, our approach is we sit down with you and we identify what your needs are, and so you tell us what you're looking for. And then there's a bunch of reoccurring grants that happen year to year, TIB, things like that. Then there's a lot of, uh, oh, pilot programs that come out periodically from the state or fed. So if we know what your needs are, we've got a list of, of X versus Y kind of matches. If we find something, we let you know that it's on the horizon, and then, and then it becomes a priority to get it in by the, by the grant date. So understanding your needs, knowing what grants to look for, and then we prioritize your project to meet the grant deadline. With that said, again, if you have a lobbyist, we need to understand, you know, what the needs are so we can let the lobbyists also know that we're pursuing some of these grants, and they can also be over there advocating for you in terms of helping to secure the funds.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. If, if you could send that contract over so we can take a look at it, and then we'll bring it before council on a vote.
Sounds great. Did, did we already exchange that, or we need to coordinate on that tomorrow or the next day? I'll, I'll follow up. This isn't the right time.
If we could, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thanks for the time, guys.
All right. Next up is our first look at the animal ordinance update. And Desi Allinger Nelson will be presenting. Hi, Desi.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Tonight, we're going to take just a first look at our animal regulation ordinance, so next, please. So the background on this is it came to our attention that our animal regulation did not have a definition for senior citizen, even though we offer regulation did not have a definition for senior citizen, even though we offer a senior citizen discount for dog licensing, nor did we have a definition for a service animal per R C W four nine point six zero point zero four zero two four, which is not the same as an emotional support animal. For your information, Washington State does not legally recognize emotional support animals, meaning that no state law offers additional protections or public access to them. Yes, emotional support animals often have therapeutic benefits for their owners, providing a sense of safety, companionship and comfort to those with psychiatric or emotional cond- conditions just by being there. However, they don't qualify as service animals under the A D A or state law. With that said, if you are a person who has been diagnosed with a mental disability, then Washington State law allows qualified individuals to have their emotional support animals in housing and enjoy certain accommodation rights. For your information, an emotional support animal has to be prescribed or recommended by a qualified mental health profession. And the patient's therapist, counselor or psychiatrist must decide that an animal benefits their mental health in some way. Emotional support animals are to be counted in the number of dogs allowed per household, which the maximum is three for the city of La Center. Next. The duration of licensing was to renew annually by the end of each January, despite the fact that if someone came in and obtained or renewed their dog licensing in November or December, let's say, of that previous year, then they would have to come right back in and renew in just a few months. Surrounding cities have a variety of renewal dates and not two are alike. Next. It was also noted that our code six point ten point zero six zero application for license asked for the owner's date of birth and not their email. There is no legal reason for us to capture a dog owner's date of birth. But we would want to have their email on file as a means of communication. Next.
Desi, do we want to talk about the microchip recognition?
It's coming up.
Okay, alright.
Um, so in our ordinance, our staff title, it says that it is under the Finance Director slash City Clerk. And we were going to change that to Director of Administrative Services. But that's up for discussion. Next. The following codes are updated for minor changes in language. They are the six point one zero zero nine zero eight, six point one zero zero four zero, six point one zero one two zero and six point one zero three six zero. So they say, I'll get my other glasses here. To match the definition of a service animal as defined by the R C W. City Animal Fund to change that to a general fund, because we don't have a city animal fund. Add Humane Society of Southwest Washington and removing animal control and replacing with animal control authority. Next. It is necessary to remove class C felony under six point one zero point two hundred one penalties and replace with a gross misdemeanor as punishable upon conviction and remove six point one zero two hundred three, since certain offensive felonies are beyond the authority of the city. We must also add a new line item to six point one zero point two five zero pertaining to frivolous appeals. This was per the, uh, Humane's Animal Control for Washington State. Next. Lastly, our, as our code stands now, if someone wanted a cow in their yard, if, for example, if they lived in Lockwood Creek Park neighborhood, they could, as long as they were not violating the city's nuisance or animal cruelty codes. To be realistic, we must address livestock and how they are regulated. Next. We have looked at surrounding cities and counties of their livestock codes. And we narrowed it down in discussion with the mayor and, uh, our Public Works Director and our Director of Administrative Services. And we are bringing to you council tonight to discuss this. As in Camas, livestock is prohibited in all zones except for agriculture and ranching zones. And livestock is deemed non-compatible with urban development. So that's one way to look at it. Next. Or as in Snohomish County, it's a little bit more detail. So it looks at the type of animal. So you have livestock or small livestock. And it's based on square footage of the property to give these, you know, small livestock or large livestock adequate space for care. So that is what's up for discussion of what you would recommend as a council. Thank you. Any questions?
This is a first look council, so if you have any questions, this is a good time to bring them up.
Yeah. So on the, um, on that last slide where it has the, the chart, um, where did that chart come from?
Snohomish County.
Okay.
But we modified it a little bit because it had, they have, um, a light item of beehives and we mixed that. We didn't need to address beehives.
Okay.
So where does the whole number of three dogs come from? Cause I see even with their chart, no matter how much square footage, they only allow three dogs and four cats. Where is that mathematical number coming from?
That is in our code currently.
Right, I understand. Where does that come from? Where does that, who, I mean, obviously.
That is what prior city council mayors had decided many years ago. And, uh, I did some research on surrounding cities of how many dogs are allowed in each of those cities. And the number of days they have to license those dogs. And, um, I'll go through the number real quick. La Center's three, Battlegrounds, three, Ridgefield's four, Camas is four. Woodland could not, uh, in Calitz County couldn't get a number there. Vancouver's three and Washego's three. So all but two are three. And if you lived in Vancouver, you have to license your, um, dog every three years. And if you are over sixty-five, you can only have one dog and one cat. And if you are low income, you can only have one dog and one cat. So just letting you know.
So if your dog is labeled a service, sorry, it went through really fast. I'm going to kind of re-ask.
Yeah, go right ahead.
All the research, the, the service animal, they've been deemed a service animal. Does that count towards the three? You said it does or it does not?
It is. Can you pull it closer? Thank you.
I was questioning if it was on earlier. It doesn't seem like it's on to me at all, so.
Testing. Oh, there you go.
Okay. So my question was that if a dog is deemed service animal, right? That is part of the three or it's not part of the three? It is counted towards the, one of the three dogs, right?
A person who has a service animal and is deemed that by the state of Washington
Right.
is exempt from those licensing, but they went, a person who needs a service animal wouldn't have a need for another dog.
They couldn't have.
Well, not that they couldn't, but a service animal is separate from the number of dogs.
Well, that's what my question is. Is it included in the three or separate? So it sounds separate. So they could technically, what if they have, uh, somebody else living there that has three dogs? And then they have their one dog.
And just for your information, I think the city of La Center is when we're, you know, revising codes or make, you know, adding new things, we have current residents that we would be kind and look at each situation.
Uh huh.
So, you know, just because we changed this or this is the way it is.
Okay.
I think we would look at a case by case.
Okay, okay. Good to know. Okay.
I think that would be the right thing to do to check case by case. We can't just take somebody's dog away that, that they've used as a mental health dog. And just suddenly take them away. I don't feel right about that.
No, I mean, wh- what we want to do with our code is have it up to date and regulated to match the state law. But at the same time, if someone is already in a situation that is outside of that code that we need to, you know, update, you know, we need to update a lot of our codes to keep current with the state laws and regulations. So again, we would obviously take it case by case and, you know, at that time we will redeem if it's, you know, a health hazard, a safety hazard or not.
So who would make that decision?
Well, it would be, you know, our mayor. Yeah.
So.
And, and Public Works Director. Yeah. I mean, that's something Brian has to look at. Uh, our attorney has to look at.
One second.
Yeah.
So just so you know, counsel, um, when I keep hearing that we have to look at a case by case basis, that can open us, open us up to discrimination and all that type of stuff. So we need to have laws on the books for people to follow. That being said, we can make it to where people that have animals currently, right? Are grandfathered in until those animals have passed, that they can't go and do four animals or, or four dogs at that point or five dogs, right? So we can do stuff like that. But we definitely need something on the books that says yes or no, right? There are always variances, but when you do that, you're starting to open yourself up to litigation, right? And that's not something I'd like to see the city fall under.
And I guess that's my question is, uh, from a legal standpoint, I mean, is that going to create a conflict if we are making exceptions?
Yeah. So two things. One, I, I would interpret this as the three dogs includes the service dog. It, it's still a dog. And so when we say the cap is three dogs, so the cap is three dogs. Um, I, I think you, the code says what it says. If it says it's three or four or five, that's the number. I think that you can, uh, exercise some discretion and how you enforce it in terms of giving people time to, uh, reduce the number of pets that they have if necessary. Uh, the mayor's right, I have seen situations where animals are grandfathered in. I think administratively that gets difficult because like, when was this dog born? How long have you had it? And how do you know? And, but it, it, you can write an ordinance that way. It just creates some administrative headaches.
Well, would you be able to make like a service announcement and everybody that lives in the center, let us know who has more than three dogs?
Well, that's assuming people are coming in and licensing the animals.
And so if people are licensing their pets, you have the information.
I mean, that's assuming that people are going to actually come in and, and license them. And something like this, in my opinion, would tend to change people's mind about getting the animals licensed. I mean, I would.
Right.
There's a lot that are. I think it would be a disincentive. Um, I, I think that probably in the other cities in this county, the animal regulation ordinance is probably a low priority, which is why the, the numbers don't change. I, I'm not sure that it's the city's place to tell anybody how many of whatever particular animal they can have. Um, if they're not worried or Sno County's not worried about the size of it. Um, I don't know. If, if people are gonna.
It's based on property size though, right?
Yeah, but the first box is still three, it, all, all of the, the dogs and the cats. So we could, why don't we do a maximum of five animals, no matter what they are? And as long as it's, I mean, the bigger issue here, I think is, is the
Yeah.
Whether or not, you know, the dogs bark or if there's cat pee smell coming out of the house and the neighbors are complaining or issues in the yards or animals getting out. And, you know, that's, to me, that's more of, of, of the issue. If they're well taken care of and the property is, is clean, I don't care how many dogs and cats somebody has.
But we're not just talking about dogs and cats though. So we're also talking about livestock and sheep and cattle.
I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about three dogs, four cats and one potbelly pig.
That's Snohomish County.
I don't know. The, the lady that came up and spoke earlier tonight says, you know, it's important for her to have four dogs. Maybe she doesn't like cats at all and doesn't want one. Why can't she have?
I'm not saying anything. This is the first look. What I'm saying is that when you're, when you're making your statement that it says this across there, you weren't stating that you were just talking about dog, cat, potbelly pig or anything like that.
Yeah, I said the first line. I meant the first line.
Okay.
Right? No, I don't think we should have.
We have to have definition.
We shouldn't have buffalo in our backyards in town, probably.
Right.
I would, but I won't. Okay.
Casey, you could right now, the way the code's written.
Alright, don't get no buffalo.
Yeah. Well, I like what Casey's saying. I like the idea of maybe keeping it separate, having a con- combined maximum number of animals. I think that that's helpful. I mean, cause yeah, it's like, if you want to have four dogs and no cats or one cat and two, you know, have your own combo. But yeah, I don't, I don't see why keeping it that, because this is not the first time this has come up and like, I think it's also holding back people from registering their animals properly potentially. So let's just do it right and put a, a maximum of and obviously including, you know, the livestock, obviously that includes the five. So you get five buffalo, you know, you want five, great, you know? You can scoop up that poop. I'm just teasing about. Domesticated animals. I think it, you know, domesticated animals.
So council, you guys would like to see five domesticated animals. All right, four, four or five?
I, I mean, it's seen, I guess, like the combination, it seems like, I feel like we got to make some concessions between.
I've got four, two fours and two fives.
I just, I don't know, like I, it seems like.
I don't know. I think, I, I don't think anybody should have just one potbelly pig. If you're going to have one, you should have two.
I know. It's like, is this Noah's Ark? We gotta do two at a time, don't we?
I'm serious.
Just one comment is I'm pretty sure this Snohomish registers cats and we do not register cats and we will not be registering cats.
It's loophole. There you go.
So aside from the dogs and cats at this point, because this is still a hot topic, is everything else that she's presented up there? Is that something you guys would like to see? Or is there changes to the rest of it?
Uh, yeah, I think within the city limits that, that livestock should be, should be limited. Um, small, you know, the, I think the, uh, the, a lot of people like having chickens in their backyard. As long as they're not bothering people too bad, then we should.
Well, it's, it's based on the square footage of the lot too, right? And that's what that's on there. So five thousand square foot lot is by chickens, right?
I like the square footage thing and it makes sense.
Yeah.
So.
So did the rest of the committee when we were meeting, we were like, this is something that we'd like to present to council.
Especially as we're, I mean, we bought again so much farmland and we have so much of that. I mean, that's, that's a big part of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For dogs and cats, I mean, so the cats, you guys aren't as much worried about for dogs. Do you guys have a number that you'd like to see the city bring back to you guys?
I'd like to see something else besides three. I think it's a little limiting.
Uh, yeah, I just think, I don't know. I don't have an opinion on four or five, but I don't know that we need to define each one of those animals.
No, but you should have a number, right? So if you don't put a number on there and someone goes in and does ten, twelve dogs.
Well, yeah, obviously, that's what.
No, four or five. I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not pinning you down to either one of those.
Okay.
Uh, I also want you to keep in mind that our process is whatever the number of dogs, we're talking just dogs that we have here to license. Um, we also have made a change in the code to, um, originally just said for markings on the dogs, but we included microchips in there because a lot of people microchip their dogs nowadays. And we have had cases where dogs have gotten loose and it's nice in their microchipped or licensed and or both, um, so that we can find the owner. So if we have animal control out here or police out here to pick up the dogs. Um, we've even had people bring their dogs, our, our loose dog here. And if they have a license on there, then we can identify who the owner is right away. And we want these dogs to be back to their owners safely. So by licensing them, that adds an extra net of safety for that pet.
Right.
Does the city have a reader for the chips?
No, we don't. But, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that could be an incentive and maybe that's something we start marketing and helping support. Cause you know what? I mean, well, Center Families Page is full of missing dogs. I mean, it's like, all the kids are running away from home and it's like, where are my kids? You know, I'm, I mean, I'm being funny. It's not that much, but there is a lot and that is something to consider that the more dogs you have, the more ruckus they're going to cause. They're going to get out, they're going to dig, they're going to do whatever. So recognizing the pressure that that can put on our community as well and.
Right. And so when you're thinking about the number of dogs, you know, it does cost money to license your pet. So you want to take some financial consideration in place too. If we're going to allow five dogs, that's a lot of money for people to license, you know, some dogs. So three or four. You know, just keep that in mind when you're making a decision, just giving you some information to think about.
Well, yeah, totally. Just like, I know every kid I have, that's going to be a lot more money out of my pocket. So, I mean, yeah, hopefully they, they. So I think, yeah, hopefully they, they, I mean, it's true. I mean.
So are you guys able, are you? Uh, okay with the three dogs, the way the code stands now, or did you want to change the number?
I, I think at this point, Desi, the, the number needs to be changed just from the council's reaction to this. So yeah, we will be changing the number.
Okay. So probably you're, it sounds like you're leaning towards four.
Yeah, four or five. I, I think that's something that we should meet and discuss. And then bring back to council.
Okay. Does anyone have any other comments on the presentation tonight or any other questions? Before I go back and. Write something to bring to vote at a future council meeting.
Yay or nay on livestock?
Following this chart, I like this.
You like the chart?
Yeah, we like.
Chickens?
No, we said yes to chickens.
Yes to chickens?
As long as, yeah, as long, I mean, if they keep bothering the neighbor, I mean, obviously have a conversation, but that's. We're complaint driven apartment, aren't we?
Now, you guys are okay with the chart up there, just changing the dogs.
Right, yeah.
Number, okay.
So if a person lives on a property size less than 5,000 square feet, they cannot have chickens.
Correct.
And just a point of clarification, roosters are prohibited due to.
Yes, they already are.
Yeah.
Alrighty, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I guess I have a, is there any dog breeds that are prohibited in our city?
No.
But if a dog is deemed dangerous or potentially dangerous, then there is an additional fee. But it's not based on breed.
Based on our behavior and being like a nuisance in the community.
Well, if they bite someone, oh, sure, or attack.
Oh, so they, they can still stay, but they just pay a fee?
Yeah. Significant thing.
Yeah. Is there something else that you want to add to that? Into this?
Who determines what's a dangerous dog?
When there's an incident when it bites or attacks. A person or a child.
Do some more research.
We coordinate with the police department on that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think.
It's not our determination.
Okay, I was going to say, there's gotta be some other, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a police matter.
And we have a current contract with Clark County Animal Control, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, Desi.
Appreciate it. Good work. All right. Next up is Mr. Our city attorney, Mr. Bronson Potter will be presenting regulation of camping and solicitation of aid as a first look.
Thank you, mayor. So the regulation of camping has been a. Pretty active topic the last five years and really not so much before that. Before I get into legal analysis, I just want to talk about some numbers related to homelessness. Every year, there's a point in time count, which is the only statistical survey. Made of homelessness in the country. It's organized by the Housing and Urban Development Agency, the federal government. At the local level, it's conducted by the Council for the Homeless, who, the staff of the Council for the Homeless. And a large number of volunteers on January 26th of every year go out and attempt to count. The number of homeless people there are in the community. This is a just inherently difficult job because it's impossible to find everybody. So it's pretty much recognized that the count is an undercount. And it's anybody's guess as to how much of an undercount it is. I've seen studies that. Theorize that it's anywhere from 20% undercount to 1,000% undercount. But everybody recognizes it is an undercount. So this year. The January 26, 2023 number was, there was 1,300. People who are homeless in Clark County. And breaking that number down, which that was a 9% increase from 2022. But breaking that number down a little bit, of those 1,300. 672 were completely unsheltered. 428 were in emergency shelter. And 200 were in transitional housing. So emergency shelter is defined as a temporary housing. For up to 60 days and transitional housing is housing that is for up to two years. With the goal of getting somebody into permanent housing. Taking those numbers, well. With respect to the regulation, the legal regulation of camping. The critical numbers here to compare is really the unsheltered number. The, the people who are living in public places because they have no other place to go. Just on trends. The fastest growing segment of the homeless community is seniors and veterans. And, and again, that's somewhat attributed to rent increasing faster than benefits. And so people are just getting priced out of housing. Next slide. So I'm going to apologize to you, this is a really wordy PowerPoint presentation and I don't like wordy. PowerPoint presentations, but to really. Focus on the analysis applied by the Ninth Circuit of the Federal Court of Appeals. I need to just give you some of the passages from some of the decisions. So the landmark decision is this case of Martin versus the City of Boise. That went on between 2018 and 2019 in the Ninth Circuit. What happened in this case was in 2009, there was a homeless shelter in Boise that was closed. The city had an ordinance that made it a misdemeanor or crime to camp on any public property at any time. Six plaintiffs sued the city claiming that the ordinance was a violation of the Eighth Amendment prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment. Because they had nowhere else to go. They, they had to be on public property because there weren't any beds in the city of Boise in shelters that were available to them. So what the Ninth Circuit did is, and, and we here in the center are controlled by the decisions of the Ninth Circuit. Which is the Court of Appeals Circuit for the Western United States. So what the Ninth Circuit decides is controlling on us. The Ninth Circuit said this ordinance was unconstitutional. Because it made it a crime. To sleep or camp on public property when there was no shelter available for people. What, what the Ninth Circuit did is they relied on this case called Robinson versus California. And in Robinson versus California, the US Supreme Court. Ruled that a statute that made it a crime to be. A narcotic addict or to be addicted to narcotics was a crime. So it wasn't a statute that made the use of narcotics illegal. It made the addiction, the being addicted to illegal. And there the court said that. That is not any type of voluntary act, that being a addict or being addicted is a status. And that we don't make. Status illegal, we make acts illegal. So it's fine to make use of narcotics illegal, but not the status of being addicted. There's another case that kind of. Brings this point home and, and that was another US Supreme Court decision. Of Powell was the name of the case and in Powell, yeah, stay here. In, in Powell, can you go back one? In Powell. The statute made drinking in public or being intoxicated in public a crime. And that was upheld because it said, we're not making, being. A person who is addicted to alcohol or is an alcoholic, we're not making that status a crime. We're making the being in public, being intoxicated, that's an act. And so that was upheld by Supreme Court as being the punishment of an act, not a status. But going back to Martin versus Boise. What the Ninth Circuit relied on was this case called Jones versus City of Los Angeles, which was another Ninth Circuit case. And in Jones, the Ninth Circuit said. The Eighth Amendment prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment makes punishing an involuntary act or condition. Unconstitutional to make that or to punish that if it's an unavoidable consequence of a status or. A state of being. So applying that to camping, the court in Martin versus Boise said. That this principle that we don't, if, if an act is an unavoidable consequence of your status. That we don't punish that because that's an imposition of a criminal penalty. In the case of camping for sitting or sleeping or lying outside. For homeless people, that's unavoidable. There's nowhere for them to go, so they can't obtain shelter. They have to sleep, they have to be somewhere. And so camping in this case is an unavoidable consequence of your status of homelessness. So. Again, there's a question of, well, can you punish the act of sleeping on public property as opposed to the status of being homeless? And again, that's, that's driving home the point of. If sleeping outdoors is involuntary act as a result of your sheltered or unsheltered status. Then the status and the conduct are inseparable and you can't punish the act of camping. The court did say that it may be constitutional. To prohibit camping at particular times or in particular places as opposed to the case in Boise where they just said. Any public place at any time is a crime. The result of Martin versus Boise was in 2021, the city settled the lawsuit. They agreed to spend $1.3 million for additional shelter places, spaces. They paid $435,000 for the attorney's fees. And they agreed to amend their ordinances.
Pardon me?
They didn't get a dollar?
They did not get a dollar. So. In this more recent case of Johnson versus the City of Grants Pass. What the City of Grants Pass did was they passed an ordinance that didn't make sleeping or camping. Outdoors in public a crime, but they made using blankets or bedding. A crime. And so they said, well, you know, we're, we're not prohibiting this involuntary act of sleeping outside when you're without shelter or crime. We're just not letting you use any blankets. That, that didn't go over too well in the Ninth Circuit. The city also, they said, well, we'll first make this a civil offense. So we'll just fine you and, and so it's not a crime, but on your second or third offense, it became a crime. The Ninth Circuit said, well, the fact that you make this a civil penalty for the first offense. But later it becomes a crime, it's still a crime. And then they did not allow the city to. Enforce the crime of using a blanket where they said, look, using a blanket is just. A rudimentary precaution against weather. And that a homeless person is going to have to take some action to protect themselves against the elements. And so again, it was like an involuntary act as a result of status. This case. Is, it, it could very well be accepted by the US Supreme Court for review. And we won't know until later this year or early next year. But there was a dissent written in the case that was pretty strong, saying, no, this is an act, not status. And Justice O'Sganland of the Supreme Court has come out publicly and criticized this decision. So there may be in the near future, some additional case law on this, but as we sit here today. It's pretty clear that at least in the Ninth Circuit, you can't make a crime of. Camping in all places, all public places at all times.
Does there have to be like a location, a distance for the nearest bed? So like what would be?
So yeah, let's go to the next slide is. That's our next one. Yeah. So what can cities do, right? That's your question?
Well, yeah, I mean, if they're trying to sleep here, obviously we know we don't have any shelters or beds for them to sleep in, but. What's their nearest, yeah, destination?
So Martin versus Boise, the court said, they didn't say it was constitutional to just prohibit at certain times or certain places, but they said it may be. Some jurisdictions I know in California and Hawaii. Have. Limited the prohibition to certain places like parks, streets, sidewalks. But not all public places. And that's been upheld. There's only one case that I know of that did a time limitation or the issue was time limitation. And what the courts in that case was that it's not. Illegal or unconstitutional to not let people stay someplace indefinitely. So. Some jurisdictions have said that. You can camp from nine PM to seven AM, but not seven AM to nine PM. So, you know, it's sort of a time limit on, you know, pack up. Every day.
Yeah.
Other, you know, other places you can do it by location. We currently have an ordinance that, you know, you, you, it's certainly constitutional to prohibit the obstruction of the right of way or sidewalk. So that's not an issue. Next slide, please. Our current code does have some provisions that relate to this. We do have a nuisance ordinance that does make it a civil infraction to obstruct. Parks, sidewalks, roads, alleyways. We do have an ordinance that makes unpermitted camping or overnight parking in parks a civil infraction. It's always, you know, it's a misdemeanor to trespass. So if you have a public place, say, just for example, if you had a city. Hall parking lot and you said, no. You know, this is closed from nine PM to six AM. You can cite people for trespass if they're in that area at that time.
Real quick, Bronson, what's the difference when you're saying unpermitted camping or overnight parking of RVs in parks in our current code? Then we don't have a designated place. So how can we? Give them a, an infraction for that?
It would be because it's not all places at all times. So you're just saying in a park, and this is the case in almost every city, parks are closed at night. That, that's not closing every place in the city to camping. It's just closing parks.
So, and is that, is that language specific to RVs? I don't know that that applies to somebody. Laying down on a bench.
Yeah, no, I, I, our language and our code is that the park is closed at dusk, I think is what we used, yeah. So it, it's people as well as RVs. Next slide, please. So here are some things that a proposed ordinance could include. One is the escalating level of enforcement. The first level could be just providing information on resources on, you know. Here are agencies that help people who are without shelter, need mental health counseling or whatever. The second level could be then civil enforcement and infraction. And then the third level could be criminal sanctions and. That's where. You know, that case on the, of Johnson. Where they had, they started with a civil infraction, but went up to crimes. If you just cut it off at civil infractions, you're probably safe. You're not going to be found to be unconstitutional because you're not making it a crime. The. Other side of that coin is if you're just giving a person a ticket for a fine. Are they just going to rip up the ticket and not move on? The third side of that coin is when these people end up in court. Judges rarely give people jail time for camping. So they might order them to do some community service, trash pickup, that kind of thing. They're not putting people in jail anyway. Another option is designate in certain areas where camping is prohibited, like parks. Designate areas where camping is allowed. That's a controversial one. Who's going to want? An area designated near them that's camping is allowed, but you know, there are places that are doing that. Vancouver's got their safe camping spots in certain areas. And when you do that, if there are places available for people to stay at those designated places. You can make everything else off limit. So it's, it's something worth thinking about, but. So it's it's something worth thinking about, but you know, it's it's a difficult choice to say, well, we're going to make this a sanctioned area to camp.
I nominate Casey's house here since he wants a buffalo and then the buffalo.
Uh, we've talked about this one designate times that camping is prohibited, daytime versus all times. Limit the use of cars or RVs for camping. Currently, we don't have any limits on how long you can park on a city street. So you can park your RV and stay there as long as you want. So we might want to think about having some duration of limits on how long you can leave, you know, an RV on the city street. Again, we got to think about unintended consequences and people who use the city street as storage for their RV and whether they should be doing that. But you know, if you're going to make that rule, it applies to everybody.
Right.
So I I do want to let the council know, I sit on the uh, ending homeless for Clark County, right? And the council for the homeless, I I'm meeting with them this next month. I go to a monthly meeting. One of our first things will be outreach. Uh, they have plenty of programs in homes that we do not have here in the center. Uh, so we will be offering programs out here to get in touch with those people, um, to help them out and actually get them help. Right? Um, that being said, one of the concerns I have with all of this is that while attending the meeting at the beginning of September, there were numbers and I I do apologize, counsel, I did not bring the farm with me. Uh, the numbers were that were shown for homeless in the city of La Center were actually higher than the city of Ridgefield. So please keep that in mind while we're having this discussion.
So what city has it figured out and how do we replicate it?
What city has it figured out? Well, I don't know if you've looked around much lately.
So so far, the the leading model right now, according to the council for the homeless, um, in the echo meetings is Houston. Houston has the leading model as of right now.
In terms of how to deal with homeless people or?
Yes, yeah.
Well, it's a, they claim, you know, they identified as a mental health and addiction problem. That's what the state, Washington state calls it. It's not a homelessness problem. It's a mental health addiction problem.
Actually, what's shocking and you know, my thought process was changed due to these meetings. The leading cause of homelessness is not addiction. It's actually the rising rents.
Well, that makes more sense.
It puts them out on the streets and then they start using drugs and they get addicted. And these are drugs that you don't come back from, right? Very easily.
That makes sense.
So and that's where the escalation comes from, right? And so the misconception is that the public sees a drug addict walking on the streets and they just think, oh, well, that guy is homeless because he's addicted to drugs, right? When it's actually the rising cost of rents. And I can give you an example. Um, I actually have a family member that just received notice of a rent rise of fourteen hundred dollars in one month and another thousand dollar deposit. And they are now moving in with their parents because of stuff like this, right? And so those are your leading cause of homeless.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. But that's what they like to label it as and portray it.
Right.
From their, the narrator, you know, the story that they want to create is that it's the people's problem. Right? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there, that's true. I mean, there, you can look at the graphs and and with rent escalation and homeless, they go right together.
I believe the city of Vancouver has a ordinance that limits the amount, the percentage that rent can be raised. And I'm not sure if it's on an annual basis. I believe it's can't be raised more than ten percent.
Washington?
Yeah.
No, Washington prohibits local control of rent. I I'm surprised to hear that.
They had it for a while. I don't know if it was repealed, but.
Um, so going back to a possible ordinance, what I would like is just some feedback to or some talk about is do you want to include criminal sanctions or not? Um, and I'm happy to have Chief Richardson chime in if he has a thought on the, if you don't have a criminal sanction, is giving a citation useless or does it not matter because judges don't put people in jail anyway?
I think that's part of the problem, uh, especially homeless because you're going to have, if you do any kind of fine, they're going to have to have a hearing ability to pay. And they're going to, they're not going to have the ability to pay. And the other side of the coin is if they have a mental health issue, then their attorney is going to want to get an evaluation with Western State and those aren't being done. So it's going to be difficult to do some kind of criminal enforcement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counsel thoughts on criminal uh, sanctions or not?
I think it's clearly a, uh, it's it's an issue of of resources. Resources aren't available here, so it's going to be a matter of of referrals. Whether it's a a criminal citation or a or a civil infraction, it's either one of them is going to go unanswered, most likely. So I mean, at some point, there has to be some teeth to it, but as long as we're judicial in our issuance of those civil infractions and criminal infractions, I think that there has to be some teeth, but we need to be able to to decide when it's appropriate, when it's not appropriate to use it.
Clear as mud.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's saying keep have criminal sanctions available is what you're saying. Um, so I would have to write an ordinance that included making it a crime.
I mean, what's the alternative? Not making it a crime? So then now they get to do whatever they want and now they feel like they're invincible. And then now they invite their friends and now it's a bigger party because we're not really, you know.
Well, I don't think it's necessarily about the homelessness itself, the sleeping aspect of it. It's everything that comes along with it. As far as what they're doing with their belongings, trash, where they're using the restroom.
Right.
You know, the type of activities they're participating in, whether it be drugs, alcohol.
Right.
You know, I mean, and harassment. I mean, that's a big thing that goes along with home homelessness. And I think those are punishable offenses.
Correct.
That can be, you know, brought to the table. I think putting a limit on the time.
Yeah.
And enforcing that is where we would have the most success, but um, and then also keeping up on, you know, just whatever we can on the outside of it.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, if people are assaulting people or um creating nuisances, defecating, that kind of thing, there are current rules on the books that deal with that kind of behavior.
Right, yeah.
How do you enforce that though? Right? Because if we aren't able to prosecute for other criminal infractions, how do you prosecute somebody for defecating in a field? I mean, they they're just not going to show up and or they'll bring up the fact that they're homeless and there is no toilet.
Yeah, there was no restroom available. Yeah.
Yeah. I I don't know that there aren't any toilets. Um, there probably are. But again, the all these things go back to the issue of, well, how effective is the judicial system in dealing with this whole problem?
Of course.
I can't offer you a solution for that. Alls I can say is and I, what we have control over is how we define camping and where we prohibit it for how long and what we make the punishment be. So.
Well, I think, yeah.
I mean, I think if we're active in enforcement, we're going to deter the problem. I mean, but that's where it's got to, I mean, as long as it's being kept up on, but you have to have the resources to do that as well, but
I mean, do you guys think a area to designate? No, as an answer? Or do you think um, leaving it wide open for certain times where they can just come and park in front of your house?
I'd like to know what you know about, I mean, I don't know if this is the right time to have that conversation about you said that our numbers are higher than Ridgefield. What does that look like? Where are they going? What's their pattern?
I, that I do not have an answer for, not patterns. I just, the the number that I'd seen was shocking to me. And I I want to say it was like, see, uh, that's going to go off my memory of what the actual number is. So yeah, I'd rather not.
I'm willing to have a workshop and maybe bring in counsel for homeless. We can, uh, you know, this is just a first look, but I'd be willing to do that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think that because, yeah, I think moving forward, I think the problem might just get worse is, you know, yeah.
I just talked to someone today that lives just outside the city limits and has a little property and she's got people camping in in her area.
Wow.
So.
Yeah. And there's rumors of people camping in the bottoms with children and such like that as well. So this is an issue that we do need to address.
Well, yeah, we can talk more about that side. Yeah, yeah. We'll talk more about that.
So yeah, Maria, if we can go ahead and get a workshop on the schedule here, that would be great.
Okay. Um, the next one's going to be very short and that's on the regulation of soliciting aid. And the here, the the Washington Supreme Court has issued a decision that found that a city ordinance that uh, made soliciting or begging, basically asking for money uh, on public streets, sidewalks, parks was unconstitutional. And the reason was is that you have First Amendment right to speak. And especially on areas like streets, sidewalks and parks, which are considered to be traditional public forums. If that, if you're having a law that's restricting speech in a public for traditional public forum, it's subject to the highest level of judicial scrutiny that there is. The regulation has to be content, content neutral. And that's, those are two very important words here. Content neutral and narrowly tailored to serve a significant government interest. And you have to leave ample alternative channels of communication. So with respect to the begging ordinance, it's not content neutral because you're looking at, well, what is this person saying? What are they asking for? What does their sign say? Help me, I need money. That's not content neutral. You have to read the sign to know if it's regulated or not. If you have to read the sign to know if it's regulated, it is not content neutral. So that's what happened in uh, the case of the city of Lakewood versus Willis. Um, person was standing on a freeway on ramp with a sign asking for money, got cited as a crime uh, court throughout the ordinance. So really, this is pretty much a black and white. You can't do it. You can prohibit obstructing traffic, um, or obstructing a sidewalk, you know, obstruction's not regulating speech. Uh, like I said in the earlier presentation, we do have a uh, ordinance making it a civil infraction to obstruct a street or sidewalk.
Are we allowed to give them a ride?
Give them a ride?
Yeah, out of town. So I'm sorry, no, for free.
Let me ask you something Bronson. Um, so recently, the city of Portland uh, had a lawsuit brought on to it by the ADA for blocking sidewalks and such for camping. Um, does something like that fall underneath for solicitation as well?
Um, so it 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 would if what you're prohibiting is the obstruction. So I I'm not sure in the Portland case, what's where people lying on the sidewalk and blocking the sidewalk and make it impassable for people with disabilities. Yeah, that was the issue. So that's a, you know, it is okay. It's illegal. It's not unconstitutional to make even criminal obstructing sidewalks.
Right.
So I I don't know. Yeah. So here's our provision nuisance includes obstructing traffic, uh, making it a civil infraction. We could do some more uh, defining of what constitutes obstruction and what's not. So if you're standing at a bus stop, that doesn't count. Uh, but I think what we have currently in our code suffices to provide a tool for dealing with people who are obstructing uh, sidewalks or streets.
Have you read the county's ordinance?
I'm sorry, the counties?
Yeah.
I haven't read it.
Okay. It's nine point one eight and this was, it was implemented before the uh
The Willis case?
Yeah, it was, but um yeah, it might be worth taking a look at.
Okay.
So I I think we should probably have another, our workshop, combine the two of these uh, presentations into a workshop. I think that would probably be best. And then we can have conversations on which route we want to take. This might even take two workshops, just.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a complicated.
Yeah. So yeah, if we can do that as well, Maria, I think that would be great. Of course. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the city attorney?
The city of Vancouver's ordinance requires written notice of an increase of more than ten percent, not a prohibited, not a prohibition.
It's not a prohibition, yeah.
Thank you, Bronson. I appreciate it. I know that was lengthy, but it's definitely something that we have to have a conversation about. Okay, next up is the mayor's report. Wow, we finally got to the mayor's report. Um, I'd like to thank the city and Maria and them, uh, and Desi for getting the blood drive yesterday going. I believe it was very successful. It seemed to be booked all day long.
Yes, our goal was nineteen units and we got twenty four.
All right. Yep. And I just want to state for the record, Maria lost in our blood drive with me. So my blood came out faster.
He started before me.
Hot water flows faster.
So the other thing that I want to bring up is that I did attend a meeting with Mitch Landrew, the senior White House advisor and Maria Rosenkamp Perez. And I wanted to thank them for the invite. It was a private event, uh, no press. Um, and it was talking about the infrastructure grants and the bill that was passed and about the money that's available to cities. This is important to hear because when we present for the grant writing, this is some of the the money that the city will be trying to bring into our community. Um, and there is approximately another nine hundred billion dollars available out there. So um, the hopefulness is that we actually secure funding to get the Breezy Creek widening four street done, right? Uh, and that's a substantial amount of money. So I just wanted to bring that up. And I think that's all I have for today for the mayor's report. Next up would be the attorney's report.
I think you've heard enough from me tonight.
Any questions for the attorney? Nope. All right. Counsel comments. Counsel member Fox.
Good evening. Glad to see everyone here tonight. Glad to hear uh, just people coming up and speaking and sharing what's on their heart and their minds. I think it's really important that um, our constituents be involved in this process and come to meetings and hear and learn and not just post on Facebook. It's a good place, but the real information comes from us here. So uh, thanks for those who attend. Just want to make a comment. I don't see Mr. Rosenkranz here tonight, but I just want to give a huge shout out to the school district. I just have been um, very pleased by all their work that they've been doing with the traffic and um, during transitions of um, just trying to get the the folks out of the elementary school and the aides that are down there watching the crosswalk. And they're doing an excellent job controlling the flow of traffic. And it has been a night and day difference to have this. Um, so I just want to say thank you so much to all the staff at La Center for helping make our community safer um, and helping that all flow nicely. It's been very nice. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Counsel member Casper.
I don't think I'm going to have anything to share. We got a busy night tonight, so we'll keep moving.
Thank you. Counsel member Boyle.
I did have a lot, but I'll shorten it up a little bit. Um, I was just going to say quickly, storm, stormy weather season is upon us. Just make sure you're, have your ready preparedness stuff. Check your batteries and your flashlights, all that good stuff. Um, you know, power outages happen and they will happen, that's for sure. Um, I had somebody approach me about the four-way intersection at Highland and Fourth. And they were actually looking for an update on what was going on with Breezy Creek. They were specifically asking about that four-way intersection and what our plan was there. Just they saw it as a safety concern that it was only a two-way stop with all the young drivers coming in and out of there. And uh, I don't know, Brian, if you have anything to say about that?
Yeah, I can give a very brief update on that. Uh, we have secured uh, safe routes to school funds to construct the um, signal and pedestrian crossings at that. Um, so the plan is to put that out for bid next year. Um, we don't anticipate construction starting for uh, nine to twelve months as we get the signal um, in stock, though there's with the supply chain issue. in stock. There's with the supply chain issues, signals are about a nine to twelve month lead time. So we'll bid the project, we'll get a contractor on board, get that signal ordered, and then we'll pause that contract and then construct when the signal and equipment arrive.
Are there roundabouts and stuff?
It will be a traffic signal.
Is there a possibility of putting in? It's like, I don't know what the process is to add two more stop signs to start being or would that cause a lot of issues or has that been looked at?
I'm not sure. I'll have to talk with the city engineer and see if that's been considered in the past. And then there's a traffic study that we could do to potentially consider that as an interim solution.
All right, cool. The other thing I just wanted to bring up is something that I've thought about many times. And I guess with the recent bridge traffic in Woodland, it kind of brought things to my attention a little bit more. But I'm just gonna read what I wrote because it's easier that way. But regarding the excessive amount of traffic we get when there is a wreck or construction on I five, the impact this has on our roads and the wear and tear it has is exponentially higher than our roads would receive in any given day. And in my humble opinion, maybe even the whole year. For the record, I'm asking that our elected officials at the state level take this into consideration when the city is applying for grant funding to maintain and improve this part of our infrastructure. I mean, I think we all can agree that it's a nuisance and creates a lot of different issues, safety. I mean, just with people walking the streets and I mean, it just causes issues and I it'd be nice if we could get some of that funding brought back for the impact that it has on our roads because I do think it is quite excessive. And it's not just this bridge project. It's anytime there's an issue on I five. But with that, that's all I got.
Thank you. Council member Leia.
Well, the problem with being number four, the other people already said what I was gonna say. So but I do really appreciate people coming out. And one thing I've been doing as I talk to citizens is I encourage them to please come to especially when they're asking me, when's this gonna happen, when's that gonna happen? I encourage them to come to meetings or even by Zoom because I really want citizens to be involved. And I know the council wants to know what the citizens want and that we can work with that. And I agree with you that huge impact from having the roadwork done on that bridge going into Woodland. It'll be nice when it's done, but it has really impacted the center.
Thank you. All right. Next up is our police staff report. Chief Richardson will be presenting. Chief?
There, that works. Hey, so I'm gonna just do the front page really quick here of of my monthly report. We had two simple assaults. Both were DV related. One, the suspect was taken into custody and booked. The other, the suspect is left prior to us getting there. So we're still working on that one. Let's move down to burglaries because those are always things that people are concerned about. There are two burglaries, one of which was later unfounded where somebody reported their patio chairs have been stolen out of their garage. But later on, they realized that they'd lend them to somebody. So that was that was we solved that case. So that was good. The the other one was a Chevron station, if you didn't know, last month in August. They had a stolen van out of Vancouver, broke the front doors at the Chevron station across the street, tried to take the ATM machine, realized they couldn't do that, and so they ultimately just took some merchandise and and left. So it was not as big of a loss, but obviously probably the repair in the door was probably more money than the merchandise they lost. This is important. So let's talk about auto thefts. Auto thefts are up. They're going up again. So last month, this is again in August, we had three stolen vehicles. Two were Kias and one was a Ford Thunderbird, which was an attempt. I did a check. I actually looked back year to date, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. Last year at this time, we'd had only one auto theft. So far this year, we've had seven. And back in twenty twenty one, if you remember, we had twelve already. That was the biggest. That was when we had nineteen total for the year. So my if you read the paper, everybody's talking about Kias and Hondas. There's a little juvenile gang in Clark County that they like to steal Kias, drive around until they run out of gas, and then they'll steal another one, or they'll give it to somebody to take to Portland. That's happened. We do have one juvenile in our city that was involved in that, and he was arrested and identified. So we're prosecuting that case. So it is happening even local, and what it is is people are just watching YouTube videos and it tells you how to steal a Kia or Hyundai. So steering wheel locks, I've got less than twenty left. And we'll have we'll be out. So that'll be my claim to fame. I'll be able to say that we got rid of two hundred and twelve steering wheel locks. And that's good. So one other thing is interesting before I move on. If you have vacant lots in in you own property around here, we actually had one. It was in Colombian paper about, I think, last week where people are fraudently selling your your lot under under your nose. We actually had one in our city where all of a sudden you see a for sale sign on your vacant lot, and you call the real estate agent, and the real estate agent's got all your information, and they're dealing with the seller that has your information out of state. And usually what it is is it's not the it's not person to person contact. It's over the telephone. They want a cash sale. They want to move the property really fast, and they want to use their own notary. So those are all clues that your real estate agent, you were getting, you're gonna get this piece of property stolen from you, sold, and the cash is going to somebody else. So it's always good to check those and and check the titles and make sure everything's secure. So pretty common. And it's usually vacant lots or it's abandoned buildings that aren't being occupied all the time. So that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Next up, the administrative services staff report being presented by Maria Swinger Inskey. Maria?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chief just challenged me to beat him speed wise, so I'll try that. Our August sales tax disbursement was down slightly over last year at sixty three thousand one hundred and eighty five dollars. Gambling tax, however, was at seventeen thousand dollars over last month. And then staff continued to get trained. Riley Barbera, our senior accountant, attended the Washington Finance Officer Association Conference in Spokane last week. And then I attended a training regarding employee leave laws, and all of our staff have attended fire extinguisher training. Hopefully, we don't need that one. I have wrapped up my two year term on the Clark County Public Health Advisory Council, where I was a non-elected city representative other than Vancouver on the council. So it's been a great opportunity to serve in that way the past two years. And there are two open positions that we are hiring for, an associate planner in community development and and an administrative specialist. We have extended offers for both of those positions and have accepted an offer for our front desk. And Alex has transitioned into Katrina's role as she has moved on. And then as part of the city participating in the Ridgefield Chamber of Commerce, they highlight local restaurants every year, and they include us in that. And so we they've invited us to host Wine Down Wednesday in October. So citizens are invited to join us on October eighteenth at Podunk Pizza, and it will be held from four to six P M. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can you tell us who you hired for those positions? Ours?
Who we hired? I.
Extended the the.
So I have an accepted offer, but I will tell you when they show up for for day one. Yeah. Yeah, the 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 front desk person will be here October sixteenth. And then the other person where the offer has been extended, we're waiting to hear back. Yeah. And and Jessica Nash has moved on. I don't know if that has been like said publicly.
Thank you, Maria. Tonight's meeting is gonna be still a while to go, and I've been asked for a bathroom break. So if we can go ahead and pause the meeting for five minutes for a bathroom break, that would be good. So time is eight oh nine. We'll reconvene at eight fourteen. Thank you. If the time is eight fourteen, I'd like to call the meeting back to session. Clerk, can we continue the recording? It is. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Next, we do have ordinances. So next up is ordinance twenty twenty three dash twelve, amending critical areas FEMA code. Ethan Spoo will be presenting. Ethan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we previewed this topic for you on September thirteenth at your workshop meeting. And so we don't have a presentation for you tonight on this, but just as a really quick reminder, what this is about is that a city needs to update its code to comply with the most recent requirements in the National Flood Insurance Program standards, which are contained in federal code. And one of the key features of this code update is referencing to FEMA's new flood hazard study, which adopts new flood hazard maps for La Center. And the primary change in those maps, really the only change in those maps that's applicable within city limits, is there's additional area along the lower reaches of Breezy Creek that will become that will be included within the city's one hundred year flood plane. And then there's a number of code changes that I'm not going to go over with you. Those include things like changes to the definitions, changes to when a flood plane permit is required, changes to the duties of the local administrator, and then some new language saying what can be stored in flood hazard areas. So the city is required to update these, update its code by November second of this year so that so that people can, insurance agencies can offer flood hazard insurance within the city. So Planning Commission's recommendation to you on this is that, and staff's recommendation as well, is that you open a public hearing, accept public comment, and approve ordinance twenty twenty three dash twelve, amending the city's frequently flooded area provisions. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, any questions? This is the same thing that we looked at last meeting, just so you guys are aware. Okay. Seeing how there is no questions from council, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. The time is eight seventeen P M. Are there any public hearing comments from the audience?
Hello?
Please state your name and address and stick to the ordinance at hand.
One five two West fifteenth Street.
Very good. Al Filla, one five two West fifteenth Street. You know, I God, I sit through all these things. It sure is boring. But, you know, you guys do a good job. But do we have any residents or any structures that are in a flood plain in the city of La Center? You know? And we're just give a stamp to something and it just doesn't. Thank you, God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Are there any other comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and your address, and please stick to the ordinance.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I got a lot of echo here. Hey, this is Kimberly Goheen Elvin, live citizen of Clark County, Washington. Well, sticking to the ordinance. I actually didn't quite hear this last one, but we're looking more and more like a government that wants to take people's rights away. So I'll be keeping an eye out. You know, passing ordinances about the flood range, and I am sorry, I did not hear it. I had to be doing something here, so but I have been listening. I had to be doing something here, so, but I have been listening. So, yeah, I'm going to be talking about this next time I can about everything that you spoke about tonight because frankly, I like to hear about it and then do my writings and then I'll submit my writings later. But hey, God bless America and thank you very much for, and I'm really sorry there to not be there for seeing Mr. Olson retire. So thank you. God bless America.
And Kimberly, you will get your chance at the next meeting. That's when he'll be honored with his retirement badge. Thank you.
Oh.
Are there? It was tonight. He unfortunately could not make it. Are there any other public hearing? From those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address, and keep to the ordinance at hand. Are there any public hearing comments to be read, clerk?
Not for this item.
Thank you. I would like to now close the public hearing. The time is eight twenty. And then turn it over to council. Are there any comments or questions from council, please?
We went over it quite well last time.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion then. We adopt this proposed.
Okay, I can read it. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve, amending eighteen point three zero zero point zero three zero, eighteen point three zero zero point zero four zero, eighteen point three zero zero point zero five zero, eighteen point three zero zero point zero six zero, eighteen point three zero zero point zero seven zero, eighteen point three zero zero point zero eight zero, and eighteen point three zero zero point zero nine zero of the La Center municipal code to comply with the federal and state requirements.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. This is an ordinance. So can I get a, clerk, can I get a roll call? Vote on this, please.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
No.
Councilmember Leah?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Absent excuse. Thank you. Motion passes. Next up, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, amending the MDR sixteen density, density code. And Mr. Ethan Spoo will be presenting this as well. Ethan?
All right, so we do have a really short presentation for you on this one tonight. And so this is another one that we previewed for you on September thirteenth at the workshop. Just for your information, there's been two city, two planning commission workshops on this, as well as a hearing that was kept open at Planning Commission for two months. And we also had two additional work group meetings with two individual planning commissioners on this. So the, next slide, please. So the purpose of this update is to essentially allow for more flexibility in the city's MDR sixteen and LDR seven point five zones. Those are the medium density and low density residential zones, especially when there's critical areas on the site. And in particular, to counteract the density loss in the medium density residential zone that occurs when you have critical areas on site. Next slide, please. So the feedback that we've received from developers in pre-application conferences is that they've been unable to develop in the city's medium density residential zone, especially on smaller sites. And so for an example, there is a five acre site in Timon Landing that has one acre of critical areas on it. And in that case, the developer could barely meet the minimum density requirements in that zone. There's some other sites, other areas of the city where developers, we've had pre-application conferences and developers have left the city frustrated because they, they can't navigate the city's regulations regarding density. There is no density transfer that I'll talk about here in a moment. There is no density transfer from critical areas in the city's medium density zone. So that's a direct hit to the amount of residential units that they're able to provide. And then in the city's low density zone, we do have a density transfer available to developers there, but it's very minimal. So one of the purposes of this ordinance is to update that, to make that a little bit more flexible. Next slide, please. So just a really quick refresher, critical areas are things like wetlands, streams and buffers, steep slopes and flood hazards. And a density transfer, again, is moving density that would otherwise be assigned to that area, to those critical areas, to the buildable area of the site because the city's ordinance doesn't, generally speaking, discourages you from building in those critical areas. So those areas have to be deducted from density when you're calculating it, when developers are calculating the amount of density that they can get on a site.
Like what kind of density transfer are we talking? Are we like adding, I mean, just adding just people per square foot? Or?
This is, we're talking units per acre. So we're basically saying like, okay, here is a site, and I'll run through some calculations really quickly here on the next slide. But so this is a theoretical ten acre site, and this is how density is calculated in La Center, and it's similar in a lot of other cities. So if you have a ten acre site and you have four acres of critical areas, you have twenty-five percent infrastructure, which is kind of a typical amount of infrastructure for roads and utilities and things like that. You deduct that from the ten acres and you're left with four point five acres of developable land. In the city's medium density residential zone, you can have eight units per net acre minimum. So eight units times four point five equals thirty-six units that you could have minimum. Or you could have fourteen units maximum, which is sixty-three units on that four point five acres. But if you didn't have those critical areas on site, you could develop, you could have quite a few more units. So that bottom line in the table shows you that, in this case, that, on that property, that theoretical property, the developer is losing twenty-four units minimum or forty-two units maximum just on that, on that ten acre site.
So does this push developers to build like more multifamily establishments or like a apartment complex, that kind of thing? Or like, I'm just trying to get the overall.
Yeah, it doesn't push them to do it, but it makes it more feasible for them to do it, especially on smaller sites where they have critical areas. Next slide, please.
Does, does the problem with doing this have anything to do with engrossed substitute house bill that came out in July of House Bill of eleven eighty-one?
I don't know if I can remember off the top of my head what eleven eighty-one is.
Yeah.
I've tried to read through it.
Off the top of my head, I also remember, I could not tell you.
But just talking about there's certain areas, like the critical areas, that where it's too sloped to build on or that type of thing.
Yeah, it has to do with that concept generally, right? Because those areas have to be protected everywhere across the state, but in La Center as well. And so if those areas can't be counted toward density, which is the case under the city's existing code, then that's just area that the developers can't develop and they can't, currently at least, they can't push that density to the rest of the site. So that's what this code update is primarily about, allowing them to move some of those units, not all of those units, just some of those units to the rest of the site.
Is it like a percentage then, or?
It would be limited by a maximum density. So for instance, in the MBR sixteen zone, in currently, the absolute maximum amount of density that you can get is sixteen units per net acre. If you choose to adopt this ordinance and this new code, developers would be allowed to go to eighteen units per acre. So basically, they could take two units per net acre and move that to the developable portion of the site. So that's one of the key features of this code. Another key feature of this code and a barrier that developers have been talking to us about is this code will remove the ten unit limit on multifamily buildings. Currently, multifamily buildings can't exceed ten units. And that's, doesn't really match up with what most multifamily developments and developers are doing. So this would remove that limit. So in its place, the city's height limits, parking limits, and landscaping limits that apply for each site when a developer comes in would establish the practical maximum number of units that you could have in a building because you have to provide all of those other things if you're going to provide multifamily housing. But there wouldn't be a specific unit limit on each building. And then finally, this code update will increase the acreage trigger for the product mix. And so the existing code says that for MBR sixteen, medium density site, zone sites, you, that are five acres or larger, you can't have more than seventy-five percent of one housing type. So you could have seventy-five percent of multifamily and then twenty-five percent of single family or, or vice versa. This will raise that to ten acres. So for those smaller slight sites between, you know, one and, one and ten acres, basically, they could have one housing product instead of having, needing to have two housing products. And then finally, for the low density zone, there's already a density transfer available there. As I said, it's very minimal. And so what that density transfer does in the low density zone is it says up to ten percent of the lots can be six thousand square feet. This proposed code will double that to twenty percent. So up to twenty percent of the lot could be six thousand square feet. The standard minimum lot size in the LDR zone is seventy-five hundred square feet. So that drops it by fifteen hundred square feet. That density transfer is available now. It's just ten percent of the lots going to twenty percent of the lots. All right, next slide. So the recommendation then for you is to open the public hearing, accept any comments, and then Planning Commission is recommending that you approve the proposed code updates. And there's a sample motion for you there on that slide.
Any questions for Ethan?
So this makes the density even more dense.
Using the density transfer. Using the density transfer, this would make the buildable area of the site two units more dense, two units per net acre more dense.
So are these going to affect things that are in motion right now?
It could affect things where people have come in and talked with us during pre-application meetings, but not where they've already filed applications.
I mean, I'm not necessarily in favor of adding and packing in more sardines to a can and creating parking issues and neighbor issues. And we don't, I mean, we need people, we need people to help support our businesses, but I also don't like the constraints.
That's exactly what I'm getting at, is to make it more dense than it already is.
We already have, yeah, traffic impacting issues.
Is this a common practice, Ethan, across the state of other cities that you're proposing?
Yeah, I mean, it's really common that cities have a density transfer available. Another thing for your consideration is that the city's medium density residential zone compared to most cities is really low density. So eight, sixteen or eighteen units per acre, most developers can't even build apartments at that density. Most apartments are at least twenty units per acre or greater, probably twenty-five to thirty units per acre. So sixteen to eighteen units per acre is more like a townhouse density, for your reference. So even though the city's code says, hey, you can come build apartments, you really can't do that because of the density limitation. So that's one of the things that we're trying to correct here.
We're having developers actually leave the table and not want to build because of it.
Because they can't get as many units in as that they want for the profits that they want?
Yeah, as you know, as a business owner, every business has to make money.
Oh, sure.
There has to be profitability in it, or it doesn't make it worth their while.
Right, but code is what helps keep things in balance. It's the checks and balances of it all.
But we're also talking about a basic practice that is statewide as well.
Well, I just feel that statewide, that I don't want to feel like our city is being forced to, we, we don't expand, we just make us more and more and more dense.
Yeah, it's not like we have room to keep growing out. We're just packing them all in the same.
What are the laws pertaining to development in apartments and such like that? Isn't there something that mandates that we have to allow places like that be built in a city?
So.
Or something similar to that?
The legislature adopted a bill, and you may have to help me with the number. I think it's either eleven ten or maybe twelve twenty. And that updated the Growth Management Act about two years ago. And what that says is that the city has to accommodate a variety of housing types, and it specifically calls out apartments and townhouses, manufactured homes, duplexes, things like that. So we're not specifically talking to you about this law here, but there's going to be forthcoming conversations as part of the city's comprehensive plan update where we're going to be talking to you more about housing and accommodating those housing types. So yeah, the city is going to be required to look at that by the state. And it's based upon, ultimately, it's based upon population projections that the state hands down to Clark County, and Clark County sort of divvies that out to the individual cities within the county. We don't, because the county hasn't completed their work yet, we don't know what La Center's project, population projection is for the next twenty years. But once they give that to us, we have to go through this analysis of accommodating all those different types of, of housing.
Okay, well, we can talk about housing, you know, a lot, but what about the roads? What about the infrastructure? I mean, if you add even more apartments to the other side of where the middle school they're building, I mean, we're basically getting closer to what battleground is, where you have one street going in and out, everybody's stuck on that one drag through town, and you're just adding more cars to the pile. It makes living in La Center not fun. We are a tiny bedroom community, so you put all, more beds in there. I mean, you know, we're all not sleeping well at night. So I'm more concerned about roads. I'm concerned about that. So what, we just wait till later and then hope for a grant and then hope that that happens? And then we tell the people we applied for grants, but really, if that doesn't go through, then we're stuck with the situation. But now we have a lot of houses and apartments, sorry, apartments is what I mean, and townhouses.
And what Melissa's saying, exactly what I'm hearing from citizens as I'm talking to people going door to door, they're concerned about the density and the roads and the bridge.
The layout of our, of our city, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I'm hearing. Although I know, I'm pretty sure, like you said, this is all coming down from the federal government or the state government to do this. And, and you know, let's all get electric cars or let's walk or let's have transportation and squeeze us all into cities. And I, you know, I'm hearing complaints, talking to people, they don't want that.
Yeah.
But I don't know what we can do to stop that against the state of Washington or the federal government.
Well, so a couple thoughts on that, and I'm glad you're bringing these questions and thoughts forward. I mean, those are really legitimate issues. Those are quality of life issues that you're talking about, traffic, and does the infrastructure have enough capacity to accommodate growth? In Washington State, there's something called concurrency. And that's the idea that developers have to update and, and bring public infrastructure up to date as, and to a site, through a site, as they develop it. So a developer can't create a failing intersection, for instance. If you develop a single family neighborhood or, or any commercial development or multifamily development, and it causes a failure at an intersection or it causes some other issue with the roads, road capacity, developer has to, has to build those roads to meet a certain standard and have those roads open and available to use by the time. and available to use by the time the development is is open for for occupancy. And it's similar for other things like sewer, stormwater, parks, and so forth. All have level of service standards. So I'm not saying you wouldn't notice an increase in traffic. But really, the choice, you know, we're getting into very big picture thoughts here. But really, the choice is, do you accommodate growth or do you not? And how do you accommodate growth? So this specific code update was not generated, it was generated voluntarily, I guess, if you will, based upon what we were hearing from developers. It does indirectly address the this, some of the requirements coming down from the state. But that wasn't sort of the impetus for this initially.
So these are the same conversations that residents that have been here for their lifelong, like Al, have probably had conversations. They didn't want to see growth either. And without that growth or those decisions that move things forward, I can tell you, four of us counselors up here, or three counselors and the mayor wouldn't have lived here at that point, right? If it would have been kept as a farming community and less roads and not want any traffic here. Because I'm sure, as Al can point out, there was a lot less cars when he was growing up here. So what I'm saying is, at this point, council, you guys have the unique time to actually help perceive what the city looks like for the next several decades with decisions that you're making, right? And how you want to see it go forward and that growth, that future growth and those future family members and friends and neighbors that will eventually move in.
Anax?
Well, to me, it sounds like more of an issue of you're, they're trying to add, like, add a couple more to this line and this. And then by the end, they'll have an extra sixteen, which makes their numbers look better. But to me, it's like, why can't they, there should be some checks and balances. I'm not saying I'm anti-growth, but let's have growth without trying to pack in as much as you can. Exactly. So if they're already developing up here, why are they saying no other places? And I mean, if we already have apartments up there.
Right, but if you have a house yourself and only a portion of the land is usable, right? And you're like, wow, I want to do something with this. That shouldn't count against my density, right? And that's what that's solving.
Well, it sounds like it's just adding more apartments to the end cap.
It does add more, more people, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one thing not to interrupt, I'd like to note, so Riverside development that has apartments in it was developed using a development agreement. And that development agreement contains certain modifications allowing them to exceed the densities and so forth that were.
Oh, so you're already.
In the zone. So the apartments there, for instance, I think they're three, three stories or four stories, I can't remember, three stories. You know, far exceed the densities that we're talking about here.
Okay, so you're already going outside the guidelines to make the growth happen.
I would like to hear public comment.
Yeah, I mean, too bad we lost a lot of our peeps.
Any other questions for Ethan before we do open it up to public comment? Okay. At eight forty-three, I'd like to open up to public comment. If there's anybody that would like to speak, please come up to the mics, state your name, address, and stick.
I gotta run and get my cord, I'll be right back.
Please.
Al Villa, one five two, West Fifteenth Street. Yes, I have lived here all my life. If it was up to me, all you flatlanders would not be here, you know? So get that straight. But tonight, you've got a decision to make. You know, you always, the last ten years, I think, we have a goal of this many people, this many people, and then this will happen, and this will happen, and this will happen. You know, so that's supposed to be good for the city of the center. You know? And of course, developers, if they get to build more houses on it, you know, that's good for them. So it's up to you guys, do your due diligence and decide. Because no matter what you decide, you're gonna, you're not going to make some people happy. You know, that, that's, that's a gimme, you know? But there, there are those people who say, yeah, we need to get more Just Like Out There. I call it Larson's, but you call it Riverside Estates. You know, I drive by there and I have an opinion about it, you know? And I'm not going to share because I have the same opinion when I look across the street over in Southview Heights. But, you know, so do your due diligence, you know, you'll come to the decision and you're not going to make people happy. Thank you, God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Any other public comments? Please step up to the mic, state your name and address, and stick to the topic at hand, please. All right, any public hearing comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak, state your name and address, and stick to the topic.
Yes, hi, this is Kimberly Goodyalvin. I've lived in La Center for over thirty years. My mother was born there. And my little joke is, is I was probably conceived there. Excuse me for being out of breath, but my phone, for being on so long here, has almost died. So as I'm listening, oh, boy. I mentioned earlier on record about the Growth Management Act. Clark County signed up for it legislatively, evidently. They can't get out of it, not that they want to, because they're using billions, millions of hard-earned tax dollars for this. And it looks like we bought into it too, because when you comply to what is now going to be found out as being a criminal administration, I'll say. And following the Growth Management Act, which is a Biden bumbling Build Back Better, American Rescrew Plan, all that's all in the Growth Management Act, sounds good. We're going to manage the growth, but what you're, what's really going to happen, and don't take this personally, but when you bought into this and you're complying, you are taking citizens' rights away, flat out, either way you look at it. And the love of money is the root of all evil, I'll mention that right now, since I serve God, family, and country. So when you mentioned the Growth Management Act, and hey, this is an old-fashioned matter, I'll tell you that right now. Because citizens, I kind of resent the fact that, I'm not sure this was on there for public hearing, it might have been, so I can be corrected. But if it wasn't, why? I mean, geez, citizens, I guess, do they still sit there all day? I was, I went to the Clark County Board, Board of Health today. Did anybody else that cares? Yeah, there was only one other person. So people need to wake up, and that's what this is about. I'm going to wake people up so they'll get back into their local grassroots government and get our country back. Nobody's going to tell me how many animals I can have in my life. God will provide for me, and I'll thank you very much for that. So, yeah, it might be pretty, pretty simple, and that's how I'm going to keep it. That way, nobody, nobody's going to buy me off, nobody's going to tell me what to do. And shame on any government that thinks they're going to. Not on my watch, and thank you, good night.
Thank you, Kimberly. Any other public hearing comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address, and stick to the topic at hand. Clerk, are there any public hearing comments to be read?
There is someone who's unmuted, Nancy, would you like to speak?
At that point, clerk, are we good to move on?
Yeah, she muted, there's none to be read for this item.
Okay, thank you. I would like to now close the public hearing at eight forty-eight and turn it over to counsel.
So if I'm hearing this correctly, basically, you're saying that typically, a multifamily complex would like to accommodate twenty units per acre?
Yeah, I mean, typically, apartment densities are at least twenty units per acre and not into the thirties.
Right now, we're at sixteen.
Right now, we're at sixteen, so that's.
And we're asking for eighteen.
Eighteen, yep.
Okay.
See, with this, I'm curious with this bill that just came out July twenty-third of twenty twenty-three. I mean, I've tried to read through the whole thing and didn't get through the whole thing. But this is to reduce sprawl and encourage development in urban areas where adequate public facilities and services exist and can be provided in an efficient manner. And they want to read, so they want to reduce sprawl, reduce inappropriate conversion of undeveloped land into sprawling, low-density development. And transportation, encourage efficient multimodal transportation system that will reduce greenhouse gas per capita of vehicle miles. This all goes back to the, I mean, this goes back to the, you know, having to do with the the greenhouse gas and the emissions and all of this. And that's what, that's kind of a, I really would like to study this more and what the purpose of this is. I don't think it's just about going from sixteen units to twenty units. I think there's a bigger picture than that. I'm not against building, let's, you know, build houses, but just to make it more and more dense and is supposed to help greenhouse gas emissions?
But this only falls under a debt, a transfer, density transfer, correct?
Yeah.
It doesn't just make it so that you can optimally build eighteen units per acre. It has to be because of whatever it was, I can't remember now.
If you have, yeah, if you have the critical areas and you preserve those critical areas in open spaces. You know, I guess that's maybe another point worth making, which is that those critical areas become open spaces in those developments. So that sort of helps offset the the density. But if you preserve those critical areas, then you're allowed to transfer two units per net acre to the buildable area of the site. And then to address Councilmember Leah's comments, I think the bill you're reading, it sounds like is eleven eighty-one, which is the climate bill.
Yeah.
As it's known. So, yeah, there is a bigger context to all of this, I guess you could say. That's not directly the context that we're talking to you about tonight. We're not saying it's unrelated, but that wasn't sort of the impetus for the code changes that we're talking to you about here tonight. That, that bill that you're talking about, eleven eighty-one, will be part of our discussion as part of the comprehensive plan update. You know, that's, that's in process, and so we'll have those discussions with you.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Sorry.
But I did talk to some builders, and we were talking about this bill that just came out. And I'm, I'm just concerned about it, and I would have to study it more. And like you said, and maybe this is a separate thing.
Yeah, this proposed ordinance is not as a result of this bill.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what was bothering me, yeah.
It's not.
Okay.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, providing more flexibility and density requirements, multifamily unit limitations, and product mixing requirements.
Second.
It's been moved in second, this is an ordinance, can I get a roll call, clerk?
Councilmember Fox.
No.
Councilmember Casper.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Leah.
No.
Councilmember Servini.
Absent and excused.
Mayor Strobin.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, counsel. Next up is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, amending L D R seven point five front setback code. Alec Egoro. Egorola.
Close enough, Egorola.
Egorola.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'll be presenting ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one four, it's the L D R seven point five front yard setbacks reduction. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. We introduced this topic, the work session, earlier this month with the City Council. And the purpose of this code update at high level is to optionally allow a reduced front yard setback with architectural treatments that are applied to the front facade of the home as a trade-off for reducing those front yard setbacks. This will allow flexibility for developers and home builders and also allow different home design and products on a lot, allowing that reduced front yard setback. And we like to emphasize, this is an applicant optional provision in the code that we're allowing. And they'll have to meet specific requirements as listed when they apply these reduced front yard setbacks. No other La Center zone can accommodate housing products that this code will accommodate with this optional provision. For example, the M D R sixteen zone, it does not accommodate a large lots on home since the minimum lot size is three thousand square feet for that zone. And also, it's difficult to rezone from L D R seven point five to M D R sixteen. So there's no unlimited opportunity to allow for this product type. And as I present this, we'll have some photos. But this is already occurring in the city of La Center in the L D R seven point five zone where there are homes with reduced front yard setback. Again, I'll show a couple of photos of that, so next slide. This will accommodate and encourage single-story homes. So it would be important to allow aging in place here in the city. And also encourages traditional and pedestrian-oriented neighborhood design and walkability. Other jurisdictions, we did pretty extensive research around the area, allow reduced front yard setbacks, and also require architectural design treatments to the front facade of homes. Next slide, please. And the effects of this code update, obviously, is reducing the front yard and living area setback, but also as a trade-off encouraging higher-quality home design and varied treatment of the front facades. And with that, it's reducing the garage prominence along streets from front-loading garages. So the first thing you're not, you're seeing is not the garage necessarily, but it's the living area of the home. And then also adding additional design features and adding curb appeal in attractive neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Also, the effect of this proposed code update, there'd be no increased density or reduced side distance between homes. And that's a perception of maybe allowing this reduced front yard setback, and we're not proposing those things. Also, the front of homes could be closer to the street and to homes across the street. The next slide, I'll be showing like a schematic of the right-of-way. Currently, homes can be ninety feet spaced across the street from, across the street from each other. And with the proposed code update, they could be up to seventy-four feet across the street from each other. And also, having homes located closer to a street narrows sightlines. So not with just homes, but trees and other elements. And there's been a lot of traffic studies that show if you narrow your sightlines, it actually makes people slow down. So this is a, like a indirect way of calming, of street calming for traffic. And then if you go to the next slide, these are typical right-of-way sections you see for neighborhood streets in La Center. So both of these are fifty feet of right-of-way. The top one has the right-of-way just a few feet behind the back of sidewalk. And then the lower has the right-of-way right behind the sidewalk. So since you have that fifty feet of right-of-way, the current setback is twenty feet from either side for the front of the home. So that means when homes are facing each other, they're ninety feet spaced from each other. But with the proposed code update, they can reduce their setback down to twelve feet on either side. And so that means if homes facing each other across the street could be down to seventy-four feet. So it's only a sixteen-foot difference. Other, you could see that as possibly be negligible, just because it's, it's sixteen feet as you're going down the street. So we just wanted to provide this to give a, give an idea of like, a perception of homes on either side of the street. Next slide, please. So last time we brought this forward to you, we went through some architectural treatments that will be applying to homes if they choose to proceed with the front yard setback reduction. So a couple of these examples, both in A and B here, they have a covered front porch, pillars and posts. Also knee and eve braces on the homes. And then decorative treatments around the windows like shutters or just white trim instead of standard trim. And then on the next slide, again, both these homes have the cover front porches. Also buried siding on the homes. Both of them have three different types of siding, pillars and posts. And then specifically on D, it has exterior. And then specifically on D, it has exterior wall offsets. So you see there's the three different sightings, but also the walls are at different dimensions. So it just adds more visual treatment to the home. And so we're adding these examples, these elements to our code with the reduced front yard setback. And then if you go to the next slide, so these are a series of setback comparison photos. So each photo, the photo on the left are typical, typical homes with a twenty-foot front yard setback, prominent front-loading garages, and standard architectural treatments. And then the homes on the left have a reduced front yard setback, either a non-existing garage or non-prominent front-loading garage, and elevated architectural treatments. Go to the next slide. As you see here, the photo on the right, this is actually a home in, here in the center in Heritage Country Estates. It's kind of hard to see here, but they actually have a reduced front yard setback and like a front porch. And this subdivision is in the LDR seven, LDR seven point five zone. So this is already happening in the center. We're just putting some co-language to allow that flexibility and maybe control a little bit more for developers instead of coming in for variance each time that they want to do this. Go to the next photos, set of photos, it's just another example. And then the next slide, again, the photo on the right is an example home in the center as well, also in Heritage Country Estates, that has that reduced front yard setback and a pretty large front porch area. And then go to the next slide, please. So the Planning Commission held a hearing on September twelfth, I believe, and they recommended not to approve this proposed code update because the homes would be situated closer to each other and the street with the, closer to each other and to the street. And developers should always conform to the current code requirements as set in code. And also, they believe the MDR sixteen zone accommodates this type of development. And then, next slide, please. So we had the City Council workshop on September thirteenth. As I said, general comments is that we should proceed to a public hearing, which we're doing tonight. And next slide. So our public comment periods were July twenty-fifth through August eighth, and September thirteenth through September twenty-seventh. We did receive two public comments. Alex will read these comments into the record during the public comment period. And then next slide. Staff are recommending the City Council to conduct a public hearing, accept public comments. However, the Planning Commission does not recommend approval of the proposed code revisions for the LDR seven point five front yard setbacks. And we have a proposed motion up there on the screen for you. And I am here for any questions.
Thank you, Alec.
Something I thought of after the last meeting was the, the access to the garages on the, on the backside of the house. Are those off of public city streets or are those private alleyways?
Typically, those are alleyways if they're from the back of a home. I don't think we really have any of that occurring in the center. You think, could you expand on that? Maybe in code, we have allowance for that?
I don't think we have any alley-loaded homes in the center. But we do have some examples, some which Alec showed you of the, of a front-loading garage, but it's pushed way back from the front facade, you know, so you don't see it. Sometimes that garage is, is rotated ninety degrees, so somebody drives down their driveway and then they kind of pull in behind their house, but not from an alley, from a public street. So there's kind of different ways you can, you can do that here. And this code update would allow both of those things to happen in terms of accessing the garage.
And I like to add, like, part of the, if they choose to do the front setback reduction, the garage has to always be set back at least five feet from the front living area of the home as well.
Could you flip back to the right-of-way slide?
Yes. Alex, do you want to go back to the right-of-way slide? It's, oh, right there.
So the right-of-way remains at fifty feet, which is measured from the center of the road typically. So you're not increasing or decreasing the right-of-way. The roads are still going to remain the same distance. It's just the amount of front yard that people are going to.
Yeah, that will, they'll reduce up to twelve feet instead of twenty, potentially.
And this is providing like a, what is it, a four-foot walk and a?
I believe it's a six-foot wide sidewalk.
Six-foot walk, okay. I mean, I, as long as we're not changing the driveway or garage setback, I think that, like you were saying, it does add, if we're adding architecture, it's going to change the dimension. I mean, I drive through a lot of different neighborhoods for my, my day job. And so I do see this, and I think it can add to a community, so you're not getting that effect of having just the same house being built, you know, row after row. I guess I don't see what the issue would be. I guess the Planning Commission has their reasoning behind this, but I think it just allows more variety, in my opinion.
Two of the Planning Commissioners that voted against this submitted public comments, so you can hear them in their own words during the public comment period.
Any other questions for Ethan or Alec?
Well, when I was walking on the, that new development, when you go up the OPEC highway, and I was walking in that neighborhood, it did, where the houses were much closer to the sidewalk. And my house, my street isn't like that, and it really, it felt kind of cramped, actually. But you're saying that the studies show that people drive slower in a neighborhood like that?
There are some studies. I have one in particular from the Federal Highway Administration. It's a course that they provide. It's showing like, if you narrow the street visually, it creates an effect where people can't, like, if, as a driver, if you're matching yourself as a driver, if you're in an open space like in a desert, you can drive as fast as you can and feel like you can see everything. But if you narrow your visioning, you slow down naturally just because you can't see as far to the sides. And so the idea is with homes or with trees, narrowing that sightline actually causes people to slow down naturally.
Yes, thank you.
I think, I think at this time I'd like to open up public comment. Time is nine oh seven. If there's anybody for, in the audience for comments, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and stick to the ordinance. Al?
Naaman Hanu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. So my name is Naaman Hanu. I'm with New Tradition Homes here in Vancouver. I've been in a Clark County business for thirty years plus, and we're here to support this LDR seven point five front yard setback. And that's, it would directly affect us, I guess, up in the new neighborhood we're developing up here, up of, I forget the name of the street now, Stevens Hillside, remembering the road number. So as you're aware, most land is getting less and less for developing for new homes, and most of it is sloping, doesn't have a whole lot of flat space to it. So we're trying to be wise with how we develop our properties and trying to give the customer what they're wanting, and is that, and that's a space that they can enjoy when they are home. So the current existing code worked, worked well on previously larger homes, I mean, larger lots, but now the available land is much smaller, so we have to be a little more creative. Other local jurisdictions have recognized the same things and have adopted these more modern standards as the lot sizes have been reduced to give more private space to each resident. And to help offset some of these smaller lots, New Tradition has constructed a new nice park here in the Stevens Hillside neighborhood. They'll be maintained and managed by the Neighborhood HOA at no cost to the city. This area has very nice, large place structure, a nice open lawn space, public walking trail, scattered benches, waste receptacles, dog stations for the comfort of the neighborhood and the public enjoyment. So we're really hoping that the City Council will consider adopting this new code for front yard setbacks for the better quality of its future residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Jarrett Helms.
I have a visual of the best possible.
Hi, is it time to surrender?
Homes. So I also am here to, to speak in support of the proposed LDR seven point five front setbacks update. And I just want to say thanks to the city staff, Planning Commission, and then Ethan and Alec at WSP for all of their work so far in this proposal. So my colleague Naaman has addressed the way the available land has changed over time and how other permitistic jurisdictions have successfully implemented similar codes to this proposal. And I further support this for the following three reasons. The current code limits buyer home choice and property usability. The current code limits architectural variety. And the proposed change will have more of a benefit to the public view of the homes than any negative consequences. So first, the limitation for home buyers on choice and property usability may actually be more significant than first meets the eye. So in the handouts and these matching exhibits here, the first two exhibits, A and B that I brought, it's demonstrated that with just these couple of examples, that placing the same house plan with the two different setback standards has a pretty big impact on usable backyard space as well as choices for covered porches and patios. In our climate, these spaces are, of course, important. In addition, single-level homes in particular are more challenging to fit, which limits choice for seniors. Secondly, this current code limits architectural variety. In my third exhibit, exhibit C, we've demonstrated how we and virtually all builders have many different ways that a single house can be built, and it's up to the buyer how they would like it to be built. With the current front setback code, our house plans with larger front porches are often not able to be built, limiting the buyer choice. And that will result in a more cookie-cutter result with more repetitive house plans and exterior looks. Lastly, the proposed code language has taken a very measured approach in consideration of bringing parts of the building facade toward the public street and sidewalks. Higher standards are required of builders who wish to take advantage of the proposed decreased setbacks. I've heard mentioned that most builders in the city already build to a higher level than minimum code. However, the proposed language would prevent that from changing, such as in an economic downturn, ensuring that a builder cannot exploit these code advantages and build closer to the public streets without their homes being designed in a way where both the public and the homeowners are benefited. If anyone would like more information, such as more visuals on proposed home types under this code, especially those that have front garages, we'd be happy to speak to them. And thank you for this opportunity. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Al Fila, one five-two, West Fifteenth Street. Boy, you guys, you guys are earning your money tonight. A lot of thinking, good job. And this is one, you know, what the individual homeowner, what these people are building for, you know, if they want lawn size such and such, you know, that, that's up to the You know, so, boy, I, but you also have to look at, your Planning Commission said, we don't want to do this. And I don't know what their comments are. I wish you'd read them first, but that would, that would persuaded me a little huddle-out approaches. But yeah, boy, this is a tough decision. You know, but it's, the person who buys that home, he's the one who should decide or has it built. Unfortunately, these guys, they build a home and then sell it, you know, so, which is okay, I guess. Well, never mind about that. Okay, well, thank you. God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Any public comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address, and stay to the ordinance.
Kimberly Gohean Albin, La Center, Washington. So a few things, neighborhood associations, I'm not for them. Again, they're forcing people to comply. I get it that when, you know, you have a, I'm, I'm supposing it starts in at the developer stage where they suggest a homeowner association, so their place will sell and look nice and everything. But what it really does is forces people to comply. But, so, another thing about developers, where it, I heard somewhere where we're going to do low-income housing and things like that, and or affordable housing, and being under the Growth Management Act, of course, it's a very wicked system here using hard-earned tax dollars, I'll say that right now, that, the, it is complicated, isn't it? So I hope I don't get off path here. But when they do the low-income housing, it's only for a certain amount of years, and then it goes to open market or something like that. So again, this is very technical, especially when you add in a corrupt system that I don't want La Center, Washington to fall under. So we're going to just really watch this. I really, again, there should be more public input on this. I, I feel like it's kind of just sneaking through, just almost like Clark County and, you know, Vancouver does and stuff. So, by the way, everybody should listen to the Vancouver Council meeting from last Monday. Actually, they didn't record much, but there might be something there that I said because I did say something. Anyway, yeah, so as far as the developing, let's start, so again, you know, I asked my friend, I said, you know, should we just let everything grow? And I thought, no. Thirty years of growth is enough for Clark County, Washington. It's taking my heritage of a country setting where my grandchildren are just growing up in these low-income apartment complexes that are costing millions and millions of tax dollars. People just don't know it. They just don't know it yet. But there, and, and we need to, you're taking a way of life that, what about our heritage? Well, we've got Biden's little thing coming in where you're going to put in new people in for heritage associations and all this. And I'm thinking, oh, really? Well, okay, well, they're going to do a new heritage. So there's more hard-earned tax dollars in this. It's very complicated. The Growth Management Act, it just stems out like cancer, everything does. There's a few, well, Biden's America Re-Screw Plan, or the Build Back Better bumble. I mean, it's using hard-earned tax dollars.
Thank you.
And, and most counties don't have to follow this, I'll tell you that right now. Neither does La Center. Thank you.
Any others calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak, state your name and address, and stick to the ordinance. Clerk, are there any public hearing comments to be read?
There's two. First one is from Dennis Hill, thirteen sixteen West Alder Place. City Council, Mayor, and city of La Center citizens, the ordinance twenty twenty-three fourteen, amending LDR seven point five front setback code before you tonight for approval and adoption has not been approved by your La Center Planning Commission. I'm asking the City Council not to proceed with the adoption of this ordinance at this time, but send it back to the Planning Commission for further study. I believe your Planning Commission will be able to update the LDR seven point five code so that it is acceptable to the City Council and La Center citizens. Thank you, and God bless America.
Thank you.
And then this one is from Dennis Nutrock, fifteen oh nine Northwest, three thirty-ninth Street. And then this one is from Dennis Nutbrock, 1509 Northwest 339th Street. City Council Mayor and La Center Citizens, the ordinance 202314 reducing the front setbacks in the LDR 7.5 code before you tonight was not recommended for approval by your planning commission. The reduced front setback in our LDR zoning districts will fundamentally change the character of our new low density residential neighborhoods. Your LDR code provides residents a more open and spacious neighborhood setting. The reduced setbacks will make neighborhoods feel more constrained and dense. If a resident or developer desires a more dense neighborhood, that can be achieved with our MDR or cottage housing codes, both of which have reduced front setbacks. Additionally, the reduced front yards will reduce the play area, forcing kids into the streets to play. One of the stated jurisdictions or justifications for this change is to increase the walkability of the neighborhood. There is nothing in this code change that will achieve that objective. There are no changes to the sidewalk dimensions and pedestrians will be crossing driveways. While reducing the dominance of the front loading garages along a street is a worthy goal, there are other ways to achieve this without reducing front setbacks. The garage could be required to be set back from the front facade of the home and varying architectural details from home to home can reduce the cookie cutter look. The attachments in or the photos in attachment seats staff intended to show the appearance of reduced setbacks are deceiving because except for one, all of the photos don't have front loading garages. The proposed code requires the developer to provide increased architectural details in return for reduced setbacks. However, I as as I view our newest developments, I see many of these architectural details already being included in our newest homes. Additionally, La Center Building Official provided comments on the proposed menu of architectural options and stated that builders are already doing most of these and would not need to develop, would not need further elevated design. I'm asking you to consider how this code revision would affect the character of our low density developments and disapprove this proposal. Thank you, Dennis Nutbrock.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, 9:22, I'd like to close the public hearing and turn it over to council. Before I do, I do want to tell you guys one thing. This is the same meeting that they're speaking about where one of the, it was a two, four counts or four committee members. And two voted no, one voted yes, one voted to abstained. And when asked why he abstained, he said that he did not want to create a tie vote and go from there. So I'll just keep that in mind as well.
So how long has the planning commission been working on this particular ordinance?
The planning commission, I believe, began started working on this in June of this year. And we've gone to, I believe, two planning commission work sessions, a public hearing. And then I think we had at least one workshop with them as well on this code update. Work group meeting. Work group meeting. I think it was actually the same as we did for the MDR. So there's two work group meetings with two planning commissioners each. Two planning commission workshops of the whole planning commission. And then the public hearing was continued over a two month period.
Was the this discussion a cause of of the overage in the approved expenses for WSP?
Well, I mean, anytime that WSP is serving the city, whatever those activities are, you know, whether that's planning commission or what have you. Yeah, we would bill.
I'm not trying to back you into a corner. I'm trying to get.
Bill for that, but longer discussions require more budget.
Sure. I think my 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 point with that is is that it's 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 disappointing to hear that the the planning commission has been somewhat ineffective, maybe unorganized. You know, that's I don't know that it's our position, you know, that I think the the gentleman that brought this in said, it is clear as you can get, it's buyer's choice. Nobody's being forced to purchase one of these homes. And I I don't know that why anybody else really cares whether they have a bigger front yard or backyard other than the builder. So you know, it's.
Some of it, I think it's the look and the consistency of when you're driving down the road and what you're seeing on the left and right.
But no, there isn't anything that I've seen, whether it's here or in Vancouver, that's an ugly house or is displeasing to the eye. Again, if you don't want to live across the street from a house with a smaller front yard, you don't buy that house. You go, you buy a house in a different neighborhood. You know, we're not talking about neighborhoods that are designed specifically for low income housing or where people are going to be placed. These are, these are neighborhoods that that people are going to go there, look at it and choose to buy it. If they don't want to live there, then they won't, they won't live there. Those are two completely different different areas, different intents. You know, I think that that's something that that we can certainly address in a different manner at a different time. But, you know, I think the city, there needs to be supportive of growth and development or not. And we can have one of two choices. We can, we can have growth in services or we can have no growth and keep some people happy. And then the city goes broke.
Yeah, but I mean, that's not a forever plan. They can't keep building a building just to keep giving us revenue that we need. I mean, that's not, that's not.
No, I don't. I don't think that's the intent. We're talking about available lands.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So inevitably, yeah, there's, there's a ceiling. It's not going to be a consistent cash flow for forevermore is what I'm saying. But yes, the people have the right to choose if they want to buy the house the way that it's set up.
I appreciate that this, because I'm a visual person. And once I could see how it was drawn out and I wasn't so sure after I went through the new housing area that's on the way to Woodland because the front yard is so small. But I really like how it gives you the opportunity to have a larger back yard. And so your children can go out there and play rather than playing in the front yard. So I actually, I actually like that because of how that was drawn out and people being able to have the choice of whether they want to have the house situated like that or not.
Does this pertain, I forgot at this point, to a particular lot size? Or is it?
No, it just, it's only for the LDR 7.5 zone. And the minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet. Unless you have that density transfer where you can go down to 6,000 square feet for some lots. But no, it's for any lot size and the maximum lot size in LDR zone is 11,000 square feet. So that's about the 75 to 11,000 square feet is where you're looking at.
Any other questions or comments? Thoughts?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2023-14 amending 18.130.010 and 18.130080 of the La Center Municipal Code Regulations for Front Yard Setbacks in the LDR 7.5 zone.
Second. It's been moved in second. Clerk, this is a ordinance. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fox.
No.
Councilmember Casper.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Leha.
Yes.
Councilmember Servini.
Absent, excused. Motion passes. Thank you, council. Okay. It has been brought to my attention and I do have to apologize to council and the audience. We will have to go back to ordinance 2023-13 amending MDR 16 density code. I do apologize. Like I said, it stops with me and I should have this knowledge. Apparently I did not, but there is an RCW 35A dot 12 dot 100 that states. And I'll read it. The mayor shall preside over all meetings of the city council when present, but shall have a vote only in the case of a tie in the votes of the council members with respect to matters other than the passage of any ordinance. So at presence, I have to strike the vote, my vote from record. And that vote for that ordinance ended in a tie. Is there any other thing I need to add for that?
No, Mayor, and it's it's not your fault. I, when the vote was being taken, it occurred to me that you maybe shouldn't be voting. I wanted to look at the statute and make sure that I was recalling it correctly. So that's why there was a delay in informing you of that. And that's on me, not you. So no, there's, the the vote should be shown as a two to two tie and the mayor's vote should not come.
So then what happens?
It can come back or it dies. It's one of the two. So I do apologize again, council, for that. That being said, we can now move on to 1.9. Is there any unfinished business? Okay. Any new business? Okay. We do have an executive session. Oh. We don't need to take. Thank you. Yeah. All right. This is good. Okay. I do thank everybody here tonight. 9:30, and this is one of the longest meetings we've had in quite a while. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone.